Good morning. I'm inviting your seats. Good morning, everyone. I know we still have some people checking in. And it's okay. Just keep checking in. We're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. All right, so welcome, everybody. Town Meeting 2025. Thank you for being here. It's March 15th, the IAs. As we get started, first I want to just call attention to our two head tables. And thank them for being here. We have on this side our select board. I'm not saying your names. At the very end, we have the Chair of the Budget Committee. Here in the middle, we've got our town staff. And of course, our town attorney. And then our dedicated clerk's office. And of course, our fabulous media tinkerer. So, thank you. Hopefully, when you checked in, if you picked up a copy of the meeting rules, a couple that I'd like to highlight for you. We're not going to go through them all, but C, legally allow amendments. If you have an amendment for any article, it must be submitted in writing. And please bring that up to Alyssa, so she can take that. Amendments made from the floor, they need to come up in writing. And then you can bring them from the floor. D, RSA 40:20, or 7. No person shall speak without leave of the moderator, nor when any person is speaking in order. So again, let's just have a respectful town meeting. When you are speaking, you need to be on microphone. This is to help everybody hear you, help the people that are joining us online and watching. And help, we've got Val News here, and helps our meditator. So you need to come to the microphone. You need to be acknowledged. I will just acknowledge you like that, and then you can speak. There's no calling out from the audience. And fortunately, if you are joining us online, we are not asking comments from anybody online. It is watching only. G, brevity is your friend. Unless there's a motion otherwise. So there's always some confusion on this. I just want to cover calling the question, motions to limit debate. If the calling question is made too early, we will not accept it. If someone comes up and calls the question, and there are other people in line who have not spoken, or somebody comes quickly and gets in line who has not already spoken, we will still hear them. So calling the question doesn't mean that all discussion stops. We want to hear from everybody that has something to say. And preferably, if you have spoken once, do not come up again until everybody has spoken. Non-residents, we do have a few here that are going to be speaking, or at least one and O will be speaking on behalf of an article. And so we are going to permit them to speak here as a professional. If there's a request for secret ballot, this required in advance, and it has to have at least five voters prior to the vote. It must be written request. So requests for secret ballots, turn them in to me at any time. If you have any announcements for public events, such as the court weekend dinner, that will be tonight, takeout only, from 5 to 6 p.m. from Elias. Please bring those public announcements up to me. I will make them up from here. We don't need to start having everyone announcing your kids' play, or sporting event, or whatever. Okay? So bring them up to me. I will make those announcements for you. Those are the rules of the meeting. Let's move forward. All right? Right now, I'm going to turn this over to our select board. Invite the select board to acknowledge those that we have lost this past year.
Good morning. In 2024, the town of Enfield sadly lost Barbara Dow, who served on the Enfield Fast Squad for 29 years. A hard screw-up to her family. We also lost many other folks in town, who I would ask you to take a moment of silence for. And I want to acknowledge that at the very beginning of this year, we lost someone very dear to our town, who, while he didn't sit on every town committee, most of you know, and that was Jimmy Carter. So our heart goes out to his family and friends as well.
The town and your select board would like to recognize those individuals who have served the community by volunteering on boards, commissions, and committees who left our service in 2024. Some of these individuals continue to serve in other capacities on other boards and commissions. Many thanks to those individuals for giving up their time so generously and sharing their knowledge and expertise, which is so vital to the operation of local government. I won't read all the names, as I'm unlikely to misread my own last name or something. But thank you to all the volunteers for their good service.
All right. Well, on Tuesday, we got this meeting started with our ballot vote. So I'm happy to announce the winners of Article 1. We had 506 ballots cast. And the results are moderator for two years, Lindsay Smith; one budget committee member for two years, Dave Buffet; trustee of trust funds for two years, Scott Tarami; select board member for three years, Eric Russell; town clerk for three years, Wendy Huntley; trustee of trust funds for three years, John Carr; cemetery trustee for three years, Sarah Jur; library trustee for three years, Ashley Kohl Henry; zoning board of adjustment members for three years, there were two, Tiffany Adams, Tim Lenihan; and budget committee members for three years, maybe three, Kristen Bean, Shirley Green, and Jamie Plumlee. Congratulations. And if you have anyone that has elected to a position on Tuesday, you need to swear in with Wendy before you leave today. If you can't, you can take a trip to the town office, but we're all here. Zoning Amendment Articles. We're also voting on on Tuesday. The results are Article 2, zoning amendment number one relative to amendment 401.3, our five district, following purposes only subject to the following regulations and limitations. A, one family, two family-laden manufactured homes on individual lots. 349, yea; 127, nay. This article passed. For Article 3, zoning amendment number two, relative to amendment to 422 accessory dwelling units, 346, yea; 139, nay. This article passed. Article 4, zoning amendment relative to amendment to parking requirements, 390, yea; 93, nay. This article passed. And Article 5, zoning amendment relative to amendment in the minimum lot size in the community business district to reduce to a quarter acre where connection to the municipal sewer system is possible, 323, yea; 149, nay. This article passed. Thank you for all who came out and voted on Tuesday. And now we're going to start with the new business of the day.
To move, I'd like to make a motion to move Article 12, SB 2, up to before the budget after Article 8.
And your name, please?
Deborah Ford.
Deborah Ford. So Deborah Ford makes a motion to move Article 12, advance Article 12, to after Article 7 and before Article 8. Do I have a second?
Yes, I have.
So I'll give it to Kristen. All right. Is there a discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that I have an obligation this afternoon. Probably half the people in this room know Kathy Ford. She has a 90th birthday celebration this afternoon that I am not going to miss.
Any other discussion on this motion to advance Article 12 up to Article 78? Seeing none, all in favor of moving Article 12? I forgot, let's, we're going to disperse with days and days. We're going to raise your voting card. All in favor of moving Article 12? Raise your voting card. Okay? All opposed? Raise your voting card. All right. Article 12 will be moved up. We will address it following the two bond articles. So following Article 6 and 7, before we get to Article 8, which is the budget. Article 6, moving right along. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,750,000 to make improvements to the municipal water system, including but not limited to the interconnection of the New Marsh wells, preparation of applications for funding sources which become available, hydrological, hydrogeological work, design and construction of the New Marsh well-filled pump house, and installation of associated controls and equipment, and replacing approximately 5,500 linear feet of 1903-era water distribution main, and authorize the issuance of not more than $2,750,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provision of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon. It is the intent of this select board to make associated future principal and interest payments from the municipal water fund operating budget for the life of the loan. The select board recommends this article by a vote of 5 to 0. Budget committee recommends this article by a vote of 9 to 0. And I'm going to invite, first?
I want to accept Article 6 for discussion, please.
I second.
And right now, I'm going to invite Jim Taylor and Ed Morris to present Article 6. Do it there, or here, wherever you prefer.
Excuse me. Good morning, everybody. I'm Jim Taylor. I serve as the Town of Enfield Public Works Director. And was asked to present this article to you folks. This is an infrastructure improvement project for us. It is to address some of the aging infrastructure that we have in town. And this all came about, and we know we've needed to replace this. Some of our pipes in the ground are over 100 years old. And we know we've had to do this for a while. But one of the things we didn't know what to do is kind of where to start. So in 2019, we applied for a grant with the state of New Hampshire to get an asset management plan done. What that does is it looks at all the pieces of equipment, all the pipe, all the pumps, everything like that, and sort of ranks it and puts it in categories for whether they need to be replaced soon, whether they can last, and so forth. And we worked with Horizon Engineers to put that together. And we rated the infrastructure on a scale of importance and condition. And the 1903 line was obviously the most needed replacements that we needed to do. And there were some other issues that we had to deal with, with pump stations and so forth. So we put that together. And then we have about maybe 15,000 or 20,000 feet of 1903 line. So, you know, where did this start? And so we started looking at that. And Horizons was quick to say, the line on Maple Street is the most important one. And for a couple of reasons. Number one, it carries water from the marsh well, which is in Canaan. And the other thing is it was located in a, I could follow the road out, and then it kind of took a 45-degree angle. Excuse me, and went out through the woods and the fields. It was a direct line to the reservoir on Supremo. It was a direct line to the reservoir once upon a time where there was probably fields and pastures, and it was easy to get to. But now it was all grown up, and had that failed, it would have been very difficult to do so. That was the number one project. Other things that were a little less important were addressing some of the water quality and quantity issues. Some of you folks that are on the system received a notice regarding a uranium level in our backup well, the McConville well. And so the state is sort of like, you know, it's a good backup well, but it really isn't, you should be moving on from that. And so we just developed a plan for these replacements, and it divided it into a couple of phases. So Phase One was the Maple Street water main replacement, and we drilled two new wells in the Marshwell Field. Over in the corner, I have a little table, and on the floor, there's a piece of pipe that is a representative piece of the 1903 line. You can kind of see what it looks like. It's cast iron, it's brittle, it breaks easily. So we replaced all on Maple Street, and we installed a new interconnection for the May Street because that has 1903 line as well. And we addressed three lead service lines that were encountered during the project. We also drilled two new wells. The well pumping capacity was tested. One of them comes in about 32 gallons a minute, and the other one is, I think, around 10 at sustained pumping. And so they also tested the water quality, and the water quality was very, very good with both of those wells. And so we didn't use up all of the money that we had available. So we continued on, and we had, there's a pump house that's being designed for Marshwell that will also house the pump controls, metering systems, and the electric equipment, and will also allow for emergency and future water treatment. We did well with this. Four years ago, I stood in front of you and asked for 1.9 million. Everybody said, well, you're going to get some grants of that. And at that time, we were approved for 10% loan forgiveness, but we were going to apply for any grants that we could find, and we did. We received a $570,000 ARCA fund grant, which, you know, cut into the total of the project. So I think when that loan finally closes later this year, it's probably going to be around 1.2 million. Next slide. So this is kind of the distribution system represented here. You can see the green line is the line, the Maple Street line that we replaced a year ago, it was 2023, starting at Room Four, going up into the Marshwell Field. You can see at the top of the screen, there's the three Marshwells that we have now. There's one that's connected, which is one of our primary wells, and then the two new ones. The hash is proposed for this next project that we're going to do. And as you can see, there's still some red on there. The red is the remaining 1903 line that will need to be replaced at some point. So, next slide, please. So that brings us to the new project, which is the Phase Two of the Asset Management Plan Recommendations. And we're going to replace the water mains on May, shed Stevens and Wells Streets. And we're also looking at Flanders Street because we've been having a lot of trouble on the upper end by the Jake's Car Wash. So we may, depending on what the bids come in at, we may add that one to it, but we may substitute that for one of the others, depending on it. These four streets have accounted for 75% of the water main breaks over the last eight years. Water main breaks cost the town between $3,000 and $6,000. We had three this winter on 1903 line, and those were just under $12,000 for the three of them. They were a little on the low side because they were in locations that didn't require sophisticated traffic management, like if we were on Room Four or something. The project will also address lead service lines that we encounter at these. Most of the lead that we've hit, not that we hit a lot, but the lead that we do hit is, tends to be on these 1903 lines, and it tends to be between the curb stock or the property line and the main. So it's not the one that we've been looking at coming into your houses and checking for, you know, people have replaced those lines typically. So it's usually what they call the boost neck, which is from the main to the curb stock. Let's see. So the request would be to have this designed in 2025 for bidding out this winter, next winter, and then construction would happen in the 2026 construction season. The second piece of the puzzle is to construct the pump house that we're currently designing right now for the reasons I stated previously. The project split is roughly, two-thirds of the project cost is the 1903 replacement, and one-third would be for the construction of the pump house, you know, treatment facilities and so forth. So, next slide, please. So our financial package that we've been working out with the state is our engineers' estimates coming in at $2.75 billion. We applied to the state of New Hampshire Environmental Services State Revolving Fund, or the SRF for short. We did that along with 106 other municipalities and water districts. The SRF program, they review all the requested projects that come in, they score them on categories like water quality, quantity, resiliency, project readiness, effect on storage and distribution, and a couple other categories, median household income is another one. Once these were all ranked, Enfield's ended up scoring number 10 out of 106. And they then take the ranked projects and the amount of money that they have, and they apply the funding to the projects. And this year, the top 18 projects were funded to various degrees. So we were included in that. Our funding includes a 50% principal forgiveness, so that immediately cut the cost of the project in half for the town. We're asking to approve the full amount because we have to, but we already are going to have half of that cut off. The lead remediation piece is at 71% of the cost share for the town, so we don't have to pay for all of that either. And then the SRF interest rates tend to be pretty reasonable right now. If we closed the loan today, it would be, I think, 3.072%. The funding is available this year. The state has received their federal allocation, and it is, I guess, safe in state hands. We've had some questions, and, you know, given the current political climate as to whether or not that's going to be available, but they did check, and it is, so that's good news. We also are applying for other grant source funding. Roy Holland has applied for a congressional infrastructure grant that could potentially fund the other half of the pump house construction. So a lot of folks have asked me, what's the impact to the water rates? This project is paid for, you know, 100% by the water rate payers. There's no impact to the taxes. And so I just roughed this out, and lots of disclaimers here. It's, you know, it's going to be based on how much you use, what the final loan amount is, what the interest rate will be in 2026. But if we roughed it out today with what we have, you know, in the bag, it would be roughly about $4 per 1,000 gallons used. So, you know, if you were someone who's sort of the average user, you'd use 8,000 gallons per quarter, it would be roughly $32 extra per quarter, or 35 cents a day. So I think the quick takeaways from this, to kind of sum it up here, is the 1903 cast iron mains need to be replaced. You know, they should have probably been done 40 or 50 years ago. I don't want to get into a situation like they had in Hanover recently, where they have some 1892 line, and they had eight water main breaks on the same line. And it was unfortunate because it was during the NCAA skiing championships. So the public works director, and I don't know if he's in the room because he's an Enfield resident, but he got a lot of calls, let's just say. I think we also need to look at, you know, expanding the water volume and availability, particularly in the light of our backup well having, you know, some water quality issues. We use that sparingly, as I kind of explained in the letter, you know, during fires, during drought, when one of the other wells is down. And typically, we will mix that water with other water, so it brings the limit down. So, you know, some people are wondering, geez, you know, if I call up, am I going to be glowing if I drink town water? And I'm like, no, no, we're all good. And last year, the, you know, the McConville well accounted for around 9% of the total water pumped. And a lot of that was, you know, when we do flushing, we turn that well on, so a lot of that goes out onto the ground. I don't expect a financial package like this in the coming years due to the changes at the federal level, and also with Enfield's median household income increasing. When you are a little more distressed with your income levels, you qualify for a lot more grants and so forth. So construction inflation is another consideration. It tends to outrun, you know, normal inflation, and there's fewer people doing that kind of work, and that's getting more and more expensive as time goes on. So I don't feel we have anything to add. I'll take some questions. Anyway, thank you.
I'll go ahead and step up here. I want to thank Jim, he covered pretty much everything. I do want to reiterate just a little bit, on the last $1.9 million loan, we got some good forgiveness on that with ARCA funds. I do think it's important for the rate payers and the people in the room to know that we also passed a $1.9 million sewer bond, which ended up with about 60% forgiveness in ARCA funds off of that as well. So they've done great work looking for grants, continuing to find ways to get money. And then I do want to just reiterate with the SRF that we have looked into it, and that money is available, it's in the state hands, and it's ready for us to take advantage of if this passes. I would agree with Jim that a funding package like this with as much forgiveness as is in there is not expected in the future. Thank you, and thank Jim for such a great presentation.
All right. Jim's here. So now I'd like to open up to the floor for comments. If you do have questions, we're not going to have a long back and forth here. Ask a question, Jim can answer it right away. There might be a follow-up, but let's again, keep it moving along. There were a lot of public hearings, so there were times where a lot of it could have been addressed. So I'm going to open right here. Please state your name every time you come up to the microphone, and let's get it going.
Steve Patton. So if only the water users are going to repay this, why is all the taxpayers going to pull on yet?
So the quick answer to that is in order for the town to...
Jim, Roger, you can go to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
So in order for the town to enter into a note, it has to be approved by town meeting. That's probably, that question's reputable. But yeah, so, you know, when we did, we did the Lakeview Sewer Project, you know, that was voted on by the community in general, but it's been paid for 100% by Lakeview. But I think the town is going to be the one holding the notes, so the town has to approve the water.
Hi, Andrew Burrier. I have a question about the funding for this year and for future funding. A majority of what you show as needing replacement falls within the TIF district, that's the tax finance district. Is that something that we could actually look at as using the funds from? Because last year's town meeting was approved to have projects that fall into this category in the TIF district funded by it. And for everybody's awareness, if you look at the town report, there's, the town wants a lot of money from that program for reinvestment in downtown. Now, could that be used as offset to the tax that the water users are going to be paying?
I don't know the answer to that question. I mean, it's a possibility. I think it needs to be included in the TIF district project list, and it could be. I don't know if, I don't think that's on there currently, but that may be a potential source for next year, and I think it would have to be voted on at town meeting. But we could certainly look into that.
Yes, it would be a potential source of funding. It is something that we would need to look at, and it may need to come back before county meeting next year to do that, but it is definitely something we could look at.
Hi, Jim. I think you know what I'm going to talk about.
State your name.
My name is Susan Brown, and I live on Depot Street, where we have some of the oldest water pipes in town. I pay full price for my water. It's brown. I put a $700 filter system on my whole house water. You're supposed to change the filter every six or 12 months. I've already owned my third filter since December, and Depot Street's not included. I hope very much that you'll pass this. Maybe it will improve my water. I had it tested by the state, and there is lead in it enough so that the little box is yellow for children. I'm concerned, so please pass this.
Hello, I'm Sharon Buffet from Enfield. I am a water and sewer user. If in anyone's mind, they think that, oh, well, it's the water and sewer users that need to pay for this. And I understand people who have septicists have their own expenses. I just want everyone to be aware of that in this, in any town, we need functioning water and sewer throughout the town, not just individual users, because the schools, the churches, the businesses, the town offices, none of the structure of our town could operate without the public being, and the employees being able to use water and sewer. Thank you.
Jean Patton. I know that we really need to do this project, and it really should be a no-brainer. And so for me, we have a lot of other articles, I say the question.
Seeing as there's nobody else at the microphone and nobody running to get there, we will commence with voting. A couple of quick, hold on, a couple of, just a couple table-setting things about voting. This is a paper ballot vote. It will be open for one hour. You are to use the yellow. Any other color will not count. And you have to carry your own. You may not take somebody else's. You may only deposit one yes-no ballot in the box. So every person, if you are not physically able to, stay in your seat, and eventually we will come and get it from you. Voting is in the back corner here with John Carr. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. Let's bring it in. And again, voting on Article 6 will be open for an hour, so until 10:35. Moving on, Article 7. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of completing a watershed management plan for Crystal Lake and to authorize the issuance of not more than $100,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, and to authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the conditions and rate of interest thereon. And to further authorize the select board to offset a portion of said appropriation by applying for the Clean Water State Revolverment Funds, if being understood that repayment of the loan funds may include up to 100% principal forgiveness in the amount of up to $100,000, with minimal or no impact to the tax rate. I move to accept Article 7 for discussion.
I'll second that motion.
And I'm going to invite Ed Tomah and Dr. Morris to come up to present Article 7.
Thank you. So, Article 7 is another SRF loan. It's similar to the last one, but it works a little different. This one goes through the Department of Environmental Services, and it comes with 100% loan forgiveness. But it's, it's kind of the program that we have to do these watershed management plans. Right now, we're working through a watershed management plan on Mascona Lake. That loan went through the city of Lebanon, and we're working with them. The project's moving along. And during that project, we were talking with DES and the consultants and some people we were working with, and learned that though the Crystal Lake is part of the Mascona watershed, that it really should have its standalone watershed management plan. So, we've worked with DES, we've put some things in place, and we're, we're coming to the voters today to ask for approval to be able to enter into a $1,000 SRF, or a $100,000 SRF loan with 100% principal forgiveness. So, in essence, it works as a grant, but it does have to work through the loan program to do that. Unlike the other SRF that we were looking at in Article 6, this money is not yet here, so it is federal funding. What we do have on this, this grant that'll help us out a little bit, and I do ask that you do pass this, is the application process actually opens later in May. So, we have a little bit of time there. And then the subreciprogram agreement, or the agreement that we actually enter into to take this loan and repay this loan will be late next, late next fall or sometime in the winter of next year. So, we have a little bit of time on our side to watch and see what happens and to work through this. But that's where we're at on this loan. I think it's imperative and important that we do watershed management plans and protect the water in our lakes. So, I do ask that we move this forward, and I would be open to any questions.
All right, if there's any, if I invite anyone from the body to come up and make statements or ask questions. Please state your name.
Becky Powell. I have a question, which is if we vote for this, and then the federal money disappears, let's say, then is it just moot, or what happens then?
Yeah, our goal at that point, as long as we haven't entered into that grant agreement, would be that we would not enter into that agreement. And we would decide what we wanted, David, if we wanted to move forward, I would recommend coming back to town meeting to talk about spending the money.
Hi, this is Debbie Plekter. I have a few questions. On Crystal Lake, we've had several studies of our water, both for phosphorus from 2000, I believe, through now, and for fecal stuff for the last five years. And it's been determined pretty evidently that a lot of what's coming into the lake is on Vicna Brook. So, my question is twofold. One, what percentage of the $100,000 is being used to re-figure out that that's the issue? And what percentage is being used to actually solve the issue? And the other question I have is about the Clean Water State Revolverment Funds. I looked up, and they said it's a 2% interest rate, but I didn't see anywhere that it said it would refund up to $100,000. So, if you could just be clear about that.
Yeah, on the SRF loan, this is, this is the program that they do. Like the SRF loan we just talked about, that came with a portion of it forgiven. The state features these agreements with 100% forgiveness. On your other question, this $100,000 is to do a watershed management plan. None of this, none of this money would be used to do actual on-the-ground projects to solve issues. But it would look at Crystal Lake as a whole. So, there may be a portion of this. They would definitely take the studies that we've done and the material that we have, so they're not duplicating that. But they'll be able to expound upon that and create a better plan and help us figure out not only down Vicna Brook, but look at some erosion issues and different things around the lake, so we can organize and move forward with projects that'll help keep our water clean.
Alan Shirley from Enfield Center. I was on the Conservation Commission a number of years ago, and I'd just like to thank Peter, the Chair, for his work with Vicna Brook. The town dug several catch bases to catch the sediment there. And they've really done a good job, and it was a start. So, I just appreciate the town's effort to try to tackle some of that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this article?
I just have a quick thing to say.
State your name.
Shirley Green. The watershed management plans for both the lakes are very beneficial to the whole town. It's very important to take care of the water quality of the lakes, or it'll really affect the economy and taxes of everyone in town. So, I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anybody else rushing towards the microphone. We, this is also a paper ballot vote. You will be using the coral. Or G red. This ballot will then go into a different bucket, so please be directed by assistant moderators, and hurry up to your seats. So just to clarify, Article 6 is still open. It will remain open. If you have not voted on Article 6, the first bond article, it will remain open until 10:35. It'll give a five-minute warning. That was the yellow piece of the paper. Article 7, we will leave open for an hour until 10:52, which is the Coral case which we just voted on. And now we're going to jump forward or move it ahead to Article 12. And this is an article by petitioner. Reads, "Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 4013, known as SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the Town of Enfield on the second Tuesday of March?" Do I have a motion to accept Article 12 for discussion? I move to accept Article 12 for discussion. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Great, and I'm going to invite the article's author, Deb Ford, the petitioner, to present Article 12. Deborah?
Thank you, Lindsay. So, here we are again. My name is Deborah Ford and I'm again the lead petitioner on this warrant article to change the current format of town meeting to SB2, which would mean official ballot voting on all issues before the town on the second Tuesday of March. As you are probably aware, this article was narrowly defeated last year and three years ago. I am here again this year because a few people reached out to ask if I would again submit this petition warrant. And the response to my lister email asking for signers on the petition was almost overwhelming. There are many town residents who, for many different reasons, are unable to attend an all-day meeting on a Saturday. As Kristin Harrington wrote in the Valiant's letter to the editor in support of SB2, "We need to recognize people's reasons for not attending a town meeting often have nothing to do with apathy about town politics, but can range from employment obligations to physical limitations to mental health. However, they still want and deserve to be able to vote on all issues affecting their taxes and their town." So, as you may already know, I've said this before, with an SB2 format, there are two sessions, a deliberative session in early February where the warrant articles are presented, explained, and discussed, and the second session on the official ballot voting day. The school district is SB2, which is why you were able to vote on all warrant articles at the polls on Tuesday. And thank you for coming out to vote Tuesday as Grafton failed all school district warrant articles except for two capital reserve funds. At the deliberative session, there is the opportunity to ask questions and make comments and the ability to amend the articles, just like we are doing here today. The Select Board, the Budget Committee, and the town administration are all in attendance to respond to any questions. By changing to SB2, more residents will have the opportunity to vote as they can go to the polls at the time that works to their schedule. And if they are out of town on voting day or physically cannot go to the polls, as many of our older residents are, they have the opportunity to vote by absentee ballot on all articles. I and others believe the current town format discriminates against those who work on Saturday. Think of those that are working at Jake's Market, those who have children involved in activities, and those who are out of state during the month of March. The argument that voters are not educated on the warrant articles unless they attend town meeting is just not the case anymore. There are plenty of opportunities for voters who want more information on any issue. They may attend the Budget Committee meetings, the many Budget Committee meetings, the budget hearing, or the deliberative session, or just read the minutes from the meetings online, which is what I do. In this era of lister discussions and Zoom meetings, we get to hear everyone's thoughts and opinions. The argument that no one attends, as I said last year, the school district deliberative session is inaccurate. When the $21.5 million high school renovation article was on the ballot, the Indian River School gym was full to capacity. And when the petition warrant article to remove the superintendent was on the ballot, the Massacre Community Auditorium was full to capacity. People will come out when they're needed. It is true that over the past few years, the attendance has been lower at the school district deliberative session. This is mainly because the school district budget has been level-funded and there have not been any controversial or big-money articles on the ballot. And yes, we have had people make motions to reduce the budget, but they have failed because pro-school people attend the deliberative session, just like pro-town people will attend the town deliberative session. Please vote yes to change Enfield's town meeting to SB2. In our current political discourse where there is a movement to prevent people from voting, we need to ensure all Enfield residents have the opportunity to vote. As Kristin wrote in her letter, "What I hope is that we can come together to pass this article so that each and every person in this town who wants to vote is able to do so in a way that is most convenient and accessible to them." Thank you.
And now we move it to the floor for comments.
Hi, my name is Debbie Klickner and I have just one question. Would the time when you were discussing it be soon available for people so that they could have, like, a week to redo the Zoom or on Zoom or whatever?
Do we want to answer that? Probably. I think the school board one was available online and it's on their YouTube channel, so.
My name is Nancy Smith and I just want to remind everybody, this is a business meeting and it's all about business. If anybody asks me to, and I'm kind of a little bit about it, the deliberative session is the business meeting and people have to turn in. We saw that in Florida where they did. And the school budget is, I think, is a little different than the town budget and the town issues. You just need to know that there's two meetings, there are two events, and one is a Saturday meeting. And if you don't want this Saturday meeting, then you're going to have to participate in a different Saturday meeting. It's just not either or. I think there are other options out there, different mixes, and we didn't take time to sort of look at, and I'm sorry about that. Maybe we need to change, but maybe we need to think about changing.
Jane Petty, I've been director of the Candidates Forum for the past couple of years and continue to do so. The Zoom question about Zoom is not a trivial one depending on where and who is trying to do that. Luckily, the videographer's team here has access to the school Wi-Fi system, I believe, and granted there's difficulties with the use of a different Zoom for the Candidates Forum. So my apologies for that, but it takes planning. I think it can be done so that there is a Zoom access to the information that is different than being able to vote and amend if you're not, if you're remote and outlying. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that. Via Zoom, you would not be able to participate like you would in a Candidates Forum, and it would be an official meeting. So we use YouTube, not Zoom right now, so people can watch, and that's what the school board uses, and then it's available on the YouTube channel. So it's a little bit different. And I think that's what would be available versus a Zoom option. You would not be able to participate if you don't go because it's still an official meeting where you have to check in with your ID and be a voter in the town. So deliberative session or town meeting session are not, they're defined at different times, but the process there is the same in terms of participation. Apologize. There you go.
Sue Gibson. Deb, thank you first for bringing this article up for people to think about. Questions I have today, Tuesday night, 485 of them voted. I would like to know how many were voted by absentee ballot. I would like to know how many voters we have here today, and I would also like to know how many registered voters we have in the town.
Well, on the checklist, I believe there are 3,388, 3,366, something like that that we voted.
You can hear that, it's free. One second. Gotcha. Gotcha covered. Because she doesn't have a microphone over there. So the checklist has about 3,300 people on the checklist.
I believe we have dozens absentee ballots were mailed out.
We have 23.
We have 27 that we mailed out. We had 23 that we received.
27 absentee ballots were mailed out, 23 were returned, so that's what we processed on Tuesday. We had 506 voters on Tuesday, and we do not have the final counts for today as people are still arriving. So, but we have this minute.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mayor Southern. I just have a question. I understand that the deliberative session allows people to interact on the topics, but actual voting could be done by people who don't attend the deliberative sessions. Then what is the purpose of the town meeting if we do that? Because isn't pretty much everything we do here at the town meeting, addressing the articles that we're voting? What happens to town meeting? Does it go away?
Town meeting goes away. SB2 has a deliberative session where the articles are discussed, potentially amended or passed, to then go on to the ballot, and then the final ballot vote would happen on ballot voting Tuesday, such as we do with the school system.
Susan Brown. First thing is you guys should provide childcare to a meeting. That's one of the problems for getting people here. The other thing is that it's my understanding where other towns had SB2, that very few people attend the deliberative session unless there's something like the school budget that Ms. Ford was talking about. And they can change the warrant articles. I remember there was one town where they killed the budget. Town meeting is the best thing we have. We are a pretty well-managed town, so people don't feel like they have to come to town meeting, but we need to keep town meeting because the deliberative session allows too few people to change the warrant articles.
Jean Patton. I fully support this article. I think it's time we move into the modern times and give everyone the opportunity, and I would like to move the question.
Not quite agree yet, so lots of people mind.
Kristin Harrington, author of the article, troubling her. I just want to clarify, so the person that asked the question about the numbers and the deliberative session, so again, just to clarify, Lindsay, I have become wrong. A small number of people at deliberative session will make a decision. We are a small number of people, in case you guys aren't noticing, that can do the same things they can do at deliberative session. I believe, I heard them back here say there's about 200-ish people here today, still less than 500 that went on Tuesday. So please just keep that in mind.
Steve Stansfield, Shanker Hill Road. I hate to say this, but you know, been there, done that. We had SB2 back in the 1990s, and it was not effective for all the reasons already stated. Look around you, you know, we have typically a town meeting attendance approximately two, somewhere between 200 and 300 people typically, probably being generous sometimes. In voting, we get maybe twice that. Again, if you're generous, you know, maybe three times that number of people who actually care enough to come out and vote. And you can make all the arguments about the timing. Well, you know, maybe it should be a different day, maybe it's in the evening, but ultimately, you know, if you care enough about the town affairs, you make a point of attending meetings and coming out to vote. And the coming out to vote part is the critical part. As has already been mentioned by other speakers, the deliberative session really in a way disenfranchises you because that small number of people that are there are sending the warrant articles for your vote. And come voting day, it's taking or leaving. You have no choice anymore to make changes, and your only option is to vote a budget or article down. In the case of budgets, it goes to a default budget from a prior year that you may also disagree with, so no matter how you look at it, you're disenfranchised. Town meeting to me is the purest form of democracy. It's unique to New England, and we should be proud of it and continue the tradition that we've had. So I heard that you vote no on this article, continuing to keep town meeting in the format we presently have. Thank you.
Francine. Applause.
Francine Loza. I might get off the point a bit to make my point, so please bear with me. I've written it down so that I hopefully won't ramble. I really like and respect Deb Ford. We're practically relatives, and Kristen's letter to the Valley News was excellent. They brought up such great points. However, I am going to vote no on this article. I've been coming to town meetings for over 50 years. I did these meetings when my children were young, just like many people today have to do. Some people just can't make it to town meeting, and some don't want to. And there are no judgments from me except to say, I love town meeting. I like seeing all of you. I like seeing former students and parents of students and new people in town especially. And there are some people I look forward to seeing. I see Kim Withrow once a year at town meeting. I see that her ears once a year at town meeting, and Dan Kylie, and so many of you. And I look at the select board, and that, yesterday, a friend stopped by my house, and she said, she voted on Tuesday, and she did not vote for either candidate for select board because she didn't know them. So I say, come to town meeting and put a face to the name that you see. And just kind of an aside, but because, because I know Eric, I spoke to him about a concern that a library patron had about parking, and because I know it's easy to talk to him, so get to know the people who represent us because they're really there to help us out. And thinking about the select board, I can't help but picture Donny Craig, and he was, he was a longtime select board member, and while it's sad he's not there, it's like a happy memory for me. I also remember Paul Mersky, and whether you agree with him or not, and what that, you could understand his very long-winded, complicated explanations about things. You knew that he had a real passion and concern and love for this town, and you saw that at town meeting. Let's say Lee Carrier, who was a budgeting guru, we're indebted to him, and he was here every year at town meeting. And how about Saltonia people, police chief Giesling with his very serious, gravelly voice. Oh my goodness, and you got to know him from town meeting. Evelyn Palmer, who was a postmistress.
Postmaster.
Postmaster.
Nobody missed her.
Nobody's missed her. And that, that sounds exactly like Evelyn. She stood up to talk about practically every article. She always, always had something to say. And when I look at the bleachers, I can't help but remember my husband Tony and his dad, because they sat there, which used to be here, but with a renovation, but then they sat there, talked around against the wall every single, every single year, and often beside Charlie Clark. And when Charlie came in this morning, he remembered that, and that's just, he's up there right now shaking his head at the public bleachers, and that just really warmed my heart. So many other people that I have to know, because this, this is the place, this is town meeting. John Cattiverga, John Dunn, Bob Pollard, I don't think we probably ever voted or agreed on things, but he always spoke on behalf of the fire department. And I did support the fire department. So many others that I experimented here at town meeting. So I like the opportunity to talk to people when I'm line casting my ballot, and at the end of the line, it wouldn't be town meeting without our assistant moderator, John Carr, standing there. Love John Carr. Or our friend Jean, who's going to get in line, she already tried once, to call the question when people start repeating themselves. Because this is the fabric of our town. This is, this is us. And yes, people come with questions and concerns that they can argue about on listserv, but this is so much better. So look at us. Just take a minute, look around, look at us. We are here gathered today for the democratic process of having an in-person respectable debate about the democratic process. Yay for us. If you are new to town meeting, especially if you are young, I want this. I want this for you. If we've learned anything from COVID, it's that we need the human connection. We've heard reasons why we should give up town meeting, why we should keep it, all practical reasons, and I think mine is probably a more emotional reason, because in this chaotic world, I think we need active participation, in-person, good dialogue. We need each other. We need to see each other. We need to hear each other. We need to take care of each other. We need to take care of our town, and I think this is the best way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. That was awesome. I too am going to vote no on this.
Steven.
Sorry, Kimberly Withrow. I live over in Enfield Center, but I've been in this town my whole life. And what I'm seeing is, if we get away from town meeting, and I realize everybody has busy lives, I get it. I too have a busy life at time to time. Any moment I can get paged out of here because I'm on the fire department, but I still choose to come. I make the time to come here because it's in-person, it's meeting people, it's getting to know who's running our town, it's getting to hear what's going on in our town and getting the explanation. Yes, I can sit on my computer and I can spend countless evenings going to these meetings, but really, you're asking people to give more time that way by going to extra meetings instead of giving up one day to come here and hear the explanation, see the people. At the town voting on Tuesday, I heard more than one person. I walked outdoors and there was like three, four people standing there, and they said, well, I recognize this name. And they're looking at the ballot, and they're trying to figure out how to vote. Well, I recognize this name. I recognize this name. Why aren't you voting for people that you actually get to meet? And that's what town meeting is about, meeting people. We've lost personal connection when we go to sitting on a computer. Social media, as you all know, has taken away the actual social part of what human people are. Social is getting up and saying, hi, how are you? Getting up, hi, how are you? And actually carrying on a conversation. Getting here and sitting here and typing down. And I looked around this morning, and I saw several people when there was a conversation going on and a presentation going on here, and I saw people where they had in their phone, and they were looking around and they're typing on their phone, not paying attention. So that is taking away from the social aspect of us. You know, come out, meet people. It's taking away the dedication to our town if we do away with town meeting. You know, it shows in our emergency response. Our police department's doing great. They're a full-time fire department. Our fire department, our ambulance department, they're not doing so great. We're hurting for people. A lot of people don't want to dedicate that time because they say they're busy. Well, yeah, I get it. A lot of it is a social thing. If you get to know people in your town, you're going to want to help them. I love going out and helping my neighbors. You know, it's, that's just how I grew up in this town. That's what we did in this town. When somebody said, hey, can you, yep, before they finish the sentence, yep, and that's what we're doing. I spent 18 years on our ambulance, giving back to people in this town because I wanted to help you for this town. I'm still in the fire department because I want to get back to this town. I want to get back to you people. We don't have that dedication to this town anymore because we want to get away from it, and we want to go to let's sit on our computer and not talk to people and not get to know people. That's what we've got to get away from. So I personally am going to vote no on this, and I would like to see people vote no on this also. Thank you.
One second. Just as a reminder, there's 10 minutes left to vote for Article Six, and then that bond article will close. So anyone that has just come in, the yellow yes or no at the top of your voting card is for bond Article Six if you're interested. And it will close at 10:35.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brendan Von Coss. I've only been in town for about six years, so kind of new to it. I just want to encourage everyone to vote yes. I work a rotating shift. I actually work nights off, always a little tired. This is O'Dea. I love being here. I just, I don't know, I kind of feel like a lot of discussion implies that people don't care if they can't make it to town meeting, and a lot of times you just can't swing it. I'm trying to swing it on a solid, not be disenfranchised, so please vote yes.
Folks, if we could just hold the applause, we've got a lot of people still in line. Okay?
Dan, I, I am going to vote yes on SB2 because I believe anything that gets more people to vote, even if, you know, and people who say, well, if you have them, they can kill the budget, well, they can't kill the budget in deliberative session. They can change the budget, but you can still have 500 people voting on the budget come Tuesday. If it does not pass, it means that there'll be a default budget. I want those people, you call them 50 people who does go to the SB2 deliberative session every year, and it works. I've been there when there were 500 people, I've been there when there were 300 people. So I think that we've gotten to the point where, you know, okay, we did SB2 back in the 90s. Back in the 90s, nobody had a way to communicate the SB2. We've got made ways to communicate. You will know what you're voting on if you want to know what you're voting on. Thank you.
Well, just so everybody has the numbers. Example, our neighbors came in in the SB2 town, they had 40 people that did their session. They had about 500 people vote in person, whereas probably about 200 people here now. So you're not comparing apples to oranges. You know, 50 people, you know, towns like Raffman, you know, several years back had experiences where, you know, 12 people showing up was one vote shy of completely changing their proposals budget. And once that's passed a deliberative session, you're either voting for change or you're voting for a default budget. Towns like Sunapeach are dealing with a default budget now. And second, I'm all for more people voting. I wish we had 500 people in here. We, unfortunately, with social media and the internet, you know, listserv and all that stuff, which is great for getting information out, the last two years, we're constantly combating a campaign of false misleading information put out to the public. And unfortunately, if, you know, if your source of information, instead of going to the deliberative session, is social media or, you know, email chains and this and that, you're going with the wrong information. Every year when we come here, we have somebody that stands up and says, you know, I understand that the budget's going up 10% this year. No, the budget's going up 1.6%. There's other things that are involved. If you don't come to town meeting, you don't get that information, and you're voting, and people unfortunately can be voting on to add information. Thank you.
Hi, Peter Malone from Virgin Island. A couple of years ago, I was very much in favor of SB2, and if you're just looking at fairness, there's no question that it's the way to go. But then I started thinking about risk, and I saw what happened in Florida where just the two people got together and cut the school budget in half, and the infamous held the day for now overturned that. They had to have a petition for a special town meeting with three-fifths of the registered voters, and they finally did get that together, and they restored the budget. But I want to point out that if they hadn't been able to do that, which took a lot of effort, that one parent could have sued, and they would have had to go for a judge who could have then restored the school budget and then some. So, and I also discovered that I like the new town meeting for the proper reasons that the other courses stated. So I personally would vote no on SB2 because I don't want to risk our budgets being cut by a small faction. So I thank you, and I ask you to vote no.
Hi, Coleman Fleming-Dumas. I've heard a lot of arguments about the social aspect, the democratic aspect, and we as a town can make a decision to have another social event if this is the space where we get to see people. But when it comes to democracy, the only true democracy is when everybody gets a vote. Everybody doesn't get a vote in this space, the people who are capable of showing up. I was at a funeral on Tuesday. I was still able to vote, which is a thing I care deeply about. I didn't have to decide between being at a funeral in Wyoming and voting. I did have to leave early to come vote in this. So I spent less time with family that I care about, who are going through a hard time, to come vote. Voting is very, very important, and by doing this, we are taking the ability to vote out of many people in this house's hands.
Hi, my name is Dan Ricken, and my wife and I moved here in 1991, and in 1992, we came to our first town meeting. We were from the city of Austin, and we walked into this room, the front of the building, renovation. We walked into that room, and it was a miracle to us. It was like, wow, this is, this is what it's all about. And my wife had one of several occasions where we said, this is where we want to come and spend the rest of our lives. We love this town, and we love this meeting. Having said that, it's not 1992 anymore. It's 2025. Times have changed. Our lifestyles have changed. Health care has changed. I threw some very compassionate pleas on both sides of the aisle. Francine, I can't remember, that was fantastic. The gentleman who came up here with a baby, that's fantastic. Last year, I came here and I said, how am I going to vote on this? And I didn't know. And I was 50/50, and to be honest, I don't remember how I voted. But this year, I tried to listen a little bit more and a little bit more, and I decided that I'm willing to take a risk on SB2. I know this risk. The gentleman that just spoke, I appreciate that. But I'm willing to take a risk and say, let's give it a try. Let's see what we can do to get more people to vote. That's the biggest problem we have right now, is the number of people who vote. If we can lift those boundaries, that would be wonderful for all of us. So just my opinion, but that's the way I'm going to vote on this. Thank you.
And then, just to, last call for Article Six, it's going to close in less than one minute. So, you on that?
Jason Carter. So I've been in town for about three years. For the past two, I've been unable to vote in town meeting because I haven't been in New Hampshire. I was traveling at that time. So this is the first time I'm able to vote in town, which is something that's very important to me. I've stayed informed about everything that's going on through all the various informations that the town pushes out, the meeting minutes, the Zoom opportunities. So I know what's going on, and like, I already know how I'm voting on everything today. This meeting is not helping me get new information. I've already done my research. So for me, I would very much like to be able to vote by ballot, and when I'm able to, I will come to the deliberative session and vote, but if I'm traveling, I can't.
Sue Hager.
Voice Camp Road in Enfield Center. I'm picking up Francine and Kim's comments because we are losing a sense of social capital in our country. We have had many examples of our listserv being out of control, but people pulling us back in and actually getting to meet people, I have differences of opinion with, for a town meeting is crucial for us to keep a sense of civil democracy alive. This is also a meeting that has changed many times since I moved to town in, I think, '87. We used to meet in this room on a Tuesday night, and I remember one night where we were here till 2:00 AM, talked about impact on work productivity the next day. We've also had people who've worked really hard to pull things together, like We've also had people who've worked really hard to pull things together, like to the process, and simplify our voting process. I think we have a town that is committed to making information available, but if we lose the social capital of being together, we're just going to be voting alone, and I fear that that's an important loss in our country in this political climate.
Roger Gottenhill, Pomeroy Field, for thirty-three years living out on Spectrum Pond. One comment that I heard tonight, or said this morning, was that limited people can make a decision. And I remember going to school deliberative sessions on Tuesday night at the high school, and we would vote on the school budget. And tons of teachers were there, tons of parents were there supporting education. And then when the vote would go down, and we would leave, the question would be re- introduced, and the vote would lose, and we would have no school budget. We would have to answer the default budget and make massive cuts. So I think from a practicality standpoint, more people voting, if people were allowed to stay there, some of them were teachers, parents, or kids, those sessions would go on until nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night in the high school. And the majority of the people voting at that meeting were for the budget, and then when we all left to get up for the next day to teach, or to go back to your kids, the vote would be reversed. So I think the more people voting is better. I think you need to take the emotion out of it, it is a practical thing, it's great that we're all here, there's people, I mean, I was a rep for six years, and there's a lot of people I don't recognize here, and I'm sure they don't recognize me. And social is great, but there's a lot of other opportunities to do social than town meeting. And so I'm voting in support of SB2 to get to most people who can vote, to make decisions for this town, and spend my tax dollars. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, that's who's spoken. Station name, please. I'm Amanda Johnson, and I remember applying everybody to the famous phrase in this country, which is, "No taxation without representation." And a huge proportion, I believe it's up to maybe even a quarter, don't quote me on this, of the town's taxes are paid by people who live on the lakes, many of whom are seasonal residents and who cannot vote. So if SB2 allows people who have some financial impact in the town, and who have sometimes been treated as sort of the bank, well, the way people will pay for it, this will give them, SB2 will give them a chance to vote. Thank you. Hold on, you've already spoken, there's someone behind you that has not, and I know what you're going to say, so. Give him a minute. I think we're good. Much again.
Marsha here, I'm in Infield Center, thirty-five years. What about absentee balance for the town meeting?
You cannot do it.
Okay. Jean Patton, Colin Horston.
Is there anybody else that, great. So, this is a...
Are you going to call upon the select board to make any comments?
Sure, the select board like to make some comments? Okay. Since this is a petition to our woman and not go through the select board, let's hear her comment.
I've been a selectman for fourteen years now. However, I was not here when SB2 made its first appearance. But my good friend and now departed Donnie Craven was, who's a selectman for thirty years, broad experience, and he said it was a disaster. People came just to try to cut the budget, which ultimately happened to the school system. And so that ended up in the fall budget. And it's happening to towns in New Hampshire now. They're going multiple years on default budgets. Then people don't get raises, workers leave, services go down. It's a pretty serious question. And I would also like to emphasize what Chief Police noted, that misinformation is becoming increasingly prevalent electronically. We cannot rely upon it. Even the listserv, people with the best of intentions come up with the wrong information sometimes. So I think we're best served, we all come together in this room, or maybe in the high school auditorium. I love town meeting. I love voting day too. They're important pieces of who we are as a community and as a people. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry? Had an opinion or this opinion of the select board, I wasn't clear when he asked his opinion.
Oh, that was my opinion.
That's his opinion. Okay.
Hi, I'm Kate Plumley Stewart, I'm a member of the select board, but this is going to be my opinion. I chaired the school board during a very difficult time in which the free staters were trying to change and manipulate the budget during SB2. And at that time, I helped lead a petition for an article to go back to town meeting format. Times have changed. It used to be you had to send postcards, you had to do the Pony Express, you had to do the Dog and Pony Show in every single town. And I love seeing you guys, we have opportunities at least twice a month for all of you to come hang out with us. So I'd invite you to come see us as many times as you'd like, it's great, and we do our best work, and we listen to you, and we work together. That being said, you know, the digital age can have misinformation, but as participants, we can correct misinformation, we can learn from our neighbors. You know, you do see people, I'm one of those folks, you're going to see me clicking on my phone, because when you make a point, I often look it up, I think, oh, and then I look up the information, and I decide whether it's right or not. So, you know, well, everybody likes to judge their neighbor because that's part of going to town meeting and being, that's life. I would say that all forms of voting are valid, and people's way of accessing information is valid, we have access to a lot more information. We have a new website, we have the YouTube website, we push out our minutes, and you can call, I mean, I'm your neighbor, people come and lean on my fence, it's fine. But I think we have all of these opportunities for engagement, but the choice to not engage is also a choice that's valid, right? Not everybody has that in their life, not everyone has time. I have a small child, I do give up time, but I acknowledge that that doesn't work for everyone else, and I think any opportunity to engage people in voting and participation is a valid form, so I'd encourage you to vote yes.
All right. Any other select persons? No. Great. The question has been called, so we're now going to end discussion. You have the, this is a paper ballot, secret ballot vote. We are using, it might say Article VIII, but cross that out, we're using the red. Okay. We're using the purple. The only one in order, all right. We're using the purple, so don't use the red. Hold that up, we're using the purple, it says Article 12 at the top. This will be open for one hour, starting now, 1:45. Thank you.[1112.13]
Alright, folks, let's go. We have a lot of meeting left. So, before we move on to Article 8, I do have the results from Article 6, the first bond article. We had a total, so if you remember, this was, we needed a three-fifths vote for Article 6. We had 212 vote in favor. Three fifths would have been 127. We have 212, oh no, we had 212 votes total. We needed 127 ayes in order for it to pass. The ayes were 2 of 3, no, against 9 vaginal passes. Article 6 passes, there you go. Article 8, so we're back to Article 8. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended sum of $9,463,131 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Do I have a motion to accept Article 8 for discussion?
Oh, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna invite the Chair of the Budget Committee, Dimitri Dzeradov, to go over, to make his presentation.
Thank you. Alright, here we are again. So, before we get into the budget numbers, I wanted to cover some nomenclature. Because speaking of misinformation, there is misinformation floating around town that our budget is going up 12 point something percent. I can categorically state that is false. I will go into great detail explaining why it's false. But it has to do with important nomenclature. There's a difference between a budget and your taxes. They are not the same thing. First of all, so if everybody were to make a budget at your own house, you have money coming in, you have money going out. On the money going out, the expenses, the town essentially has two categories. One is the general government operating. That includes all the annual expenses to keep things running. The other one is your capital improvements, which is what we'll talk about later. That is your expenses that you're investing in, things for the long term. For placing roads, trucks, things that require the gold. In the general government, there's actually multiple categories. There's the water and sewer fund, which all of you know. Those are still expenses to the town, but are being offset by revenues coming from water and sewer rates. So, there's multiple expense streams. I will specifically talk about expense streams that are associated with keeping the town running from a general government point of view, excluding water, sewer, and tip. That is what the most, most of us talk about that, okay? On the revenue side, everybody knows there's taxes. Well, there's also other revenue streams. There's grants, right? From the federal estate, there's food and meals tax, there's registration fees, there's all sorts of other taxes. So when you look at your property tax, your property tax is not the budget. Your property tax is when you take all your expenses, alright? You subtract all your revenues, and then you split it. So, your taxes going up a certain amount doesn't really have a whole lot to do with the budget. It's a big difference. And you'll see later, I will remind everybody here who was here last year, I said, "Look, I hope this is what I said, I should go back to group recording." I believe I said last year. Because of some of the things we did last year, which I will remind people of. If next year, if the budget goes up 0%, your taxes will still go up. Did I say that? No? I thought I said happening. I'll explain why. Because last year we played tricks with our taxes that we can't keep playing this year. And that's why there's a big difference between budget and taxes. So, you gotta really think of town budget as your own house budget. You have money coming in, you have money going out. At the end of the day, it brings sum up to zero. If they don't sum up to zero, your check-in can't go up. It's up to... So... On property taxes, the town does not set a property tax. The town submits a whole bunch of information to the state, and the state sets the property tax. Two, the property tax is calculated by the state in November. And so, the first bill you pay is just an estimate of what the property taxes are gonna be. So the first bill you pay actually does not even reflect any of the changes for that year. Because it's the average of your last two bills. It's simply a repeat. So the impact of all the decisions at this town meeting are going to be impacted in your bill until the last bill of 2025. Okay? Second, the property taxing has four portions in it. It has the town portion, the school district, the state, education, and then county. So there's four elements. So if your town budget going up by a certain percentage, doesn't even mean the town tax will go up by that percentage, doesn't even mean your whole tax will change by that percentage. I started introducing that last year by giving you my prediction for state, for your property taxes changes. And I hope everybody does remember that, I'm doing that again this year. Okay, so, if that wasn't complicated enough. Revaluation also impacts your property tax. Because the town submits to the state all their budget information and all the valuations, and then the town, the state sets a rate. Well, if you have a revaluation, all your assessments are trying to get them up, and your property taxes will change. So, if there's been a revaluation, that doesn't always mean your taxes will go up. In fact, I believe if statistics applies, a quarter of these rooms on their taxes will go down. And I have statistics from the town, and we'll review those on the next slide, about what happened to people's property tax bills this year. So, at the end of the day, if you have a revaluation, if your increase in assessed value is less than the average of the town, your taxes actually go down. Because that's how it works. Last year, I stood here, and I had this table that had a whole bunch of math on it. And my prediction was that the tax rate was gonna increase 6.27%. Okay? And the impact, had there not been a revaluation, so I had to do a whole bunch of math because the revaluation lasted all of that. Had there not been a revaluation, the average increase in taxes would have been 6.57%. My clue was actually much closer than I thought it was gonna be, and I was lucky. And I'll tell you why I was lucky. The reason I was lucky is that the state education actually went down. So the state education portion of the tax actually dropped. The town tax rate was only half as much as what I thought it was gonna be. But the school and the county were actually higher. So even with all the predictions I have, things were quite different, and I was lucky that it came to 0.3%. Okay, now some of you are gonna say, "Yeah, well, you say 6.57, but mine went up 15%." Well, that is because a whole bunch of you actually kinda decreased. So, if you, I'm gonna try to explain what a histogram is. So, a histogram is, if you look at everybody, I essentially had, the town sent me, I sent me everybody's tax bill. It's like, I don't wanna care about the names, I just looked at all the numbers in the tax bills. And I said, "Do that for the last couple of years." And so I looked by tax man, how much did the tax bill change for everyone? And I then had all those numbers, and I made bins. I made a bin of, I have to excuse me, everybody. I made a bin, the first one is, somebody's taxes actually went down by $1,000. So that first one on the left, I think that says 76. 76, so you saw your bill decrease when it went down $1,000. The next one was, I'm sorry, you should remember this, 1,000 to 750, then 750 to 500, then 250, 500 to 250, then 250 to 0, right? Those are all the decreases. So if you look at it, 26% of the bills actually went down. And that's because of the revaluation. That is because the value of your property increased less than the average, and therefore your piece of the pie became smaller, it didn't multiply through. So, if we now look at, okay, if 26% of the households saw their bill go down, what about 50%? So I looked at what they call the median. The median is not the average, but the median is, at what point is half of the, half of the population their bills is less than that, and at what point is half of the bills bigger than that? So, the median was $248. So half the town saw their bill increase by $248 or less. And half the town saw their bills increase by more than 248 dollars. What it's worth. So, revaluations, they really mess with tax properties. But the reason why we have them is because we, every five years, the state requires, and this is not the town's choice, that everybody's assessed value is essentially reset to what the market values. Make sense? Alright, so, luckily, this is what happens when there's no revaluation. You see how the graph is much tighter? That's because you don't have this big shift in people's properties. Everybody's bill is changing by roughly the same amount. So next year, I expect it to look like these two charts. These two charts are, here's where there's no revaluation. The peaks are essentially very narrow. Which should mean that, if I, my prediction at the end of this slide actually should be more representative of what everybody says, because we won't see a bunch of people have a big decrease, and a bunch of people see a big increase. Alright, so, key takeaways. So, last year, the general fund operating budget did increase by double-digit percent, about 13.7. And those are the exact same words from last year. However, we actually implemented some of these, as part of the budgeting process, but some of these at-town meetings, because you all voted on it. We actually implemented a number of ways to reduce taxes. If you look at last year's ballots, you'll remember hopefully that we voted to essentially close and eliminate a number of funds that are no longer being used. They had $114,000 in change. Well, that $114,000 in change was used to lower your taxes. Those funds are now gone. You can't vote on them anymore. That $114,000 is not here this year. Right? We also voted to use fund balance. Fund balance is essentially a savings account. And we voted to use roughly $300,000 in the fund balance last year. While you keep doing that every year, your savings account goes to zero. So, last year, we reduced taxes by $405,000. We can't do that this year. So, that's what I meant with, had everything stayed the same, taxes would have had to increase by $400,000, even if nothing changed. That is 2.3%. So, the increase of 6.5 would have been 8.8 without it. So that was my recap. So, this year, inflation, so two years ago, inflation was really high, should all remember that. It then went down a lot. It's, actually, the past year has gone up a tiny bit. It's averaged 3.5% for last year. Budgeting process has not changed. The goal is for us to maintain services in the town. That is what the Budget Committee and the Select Board set out to do. At this point, we didn't want to reduce services, and so the Budget Committee reviewed all the reports and expenses from the different departments, and worked with the departments and the town managers to come up with a budget. Again, the goal for 2025 was to maintain the same level of service, and again, some of the expenses are offset by revenue. For example, water and sewer, there are expenses there, we could talk about them, that there's also revenues generated, and those water and sewer funds are essentially funding themselves. So, I have to explain this to people who was sat here, right or wrong, this is the way a system works. So, but, we, most people here will not pay for the water improvements, the water and sewer, the water users will pay for the water improvements, right? So if you're not on the water system, you don't pay for the water. However, it's in the budget. We could talk about them, that there's also revenues generated and those water and sewer funds are essentially funding themselves. So I have to explain this to people who was sat here, right or wrong, this is the way a system works. So but we, most people here will not pay for the water improvements, the water and sewer, the water users will pay for the water improvements. Right? So if you're not on the water system, you don't pay for the water. However, it's in the budget. And so I will explain when we get to those slides. Yes, it's in the budget here, but there's offsets later. Community nursing. So it's a new line item this year, but it's self-funded. It is not coming out of property taxes. Youth sports, not coming out of property taxes except for a small portion of Enfield. Yes, we are, we have students from other towns that attend youth sports on Enfield's properties essentially, but those other towns are paying for it. So the numbers. So labor and benefits. So the wage cost has increased from 2.569 to 2.752, which is a 7% increase. It is, it does bring back the department of, the police department, full staffing. Like that's another thing we did last year. We kind of said, hey, the budget is going up a lot. Let's not, let's not hire, fill the open positions right away. So the police department waited to fill the open positions. And so even though last year it reduced us by half a police officer and a police assistant, this year, the people are here. So therefore, time again. We did do some increases for seasonal workers. For example, as you know, there has been no lifeguard at the beach because the towns pays more. So we increased that wage in the hope of having a larger part of it. And then we did a compensation study several years ago. We decided to spread the impact of that compensation study across multiple years to reduce the impact. This is the last year where the majority of those impacts are being implemented. Again, poll was 3.5 and the nearby towns were anywhere between 2 and the 6% range and the average was 4.5. Of that 7.5% increase, there's been a significant offset because the benefits have decreased. Mainly, the town decided to go shop around for insurance. And they were able to make significant savings in the healthcare insurance, which I will discuss later. Operating costs. Operating costs are largely unchanged. The increase is 0.3%. I'm listing here a couple of the major changes. So we are making some improvements to Whitney Hall meeting rooms. So that's a plus 60,000. However, some of that has been offset by discontinuing the cable access channel. And so the net is actually about plus 30. We have an increase in finance due to software upgrades. And then we have an increase in Lebanon landfill costs that are plus 30 as well. As you recall, I stood here talking about waste management last year because Casella contract rules up and that went up a ton. So we're still on that contract. However, the Casella contract doesn't cover actually the dumping fees on the Lebanon landfill. So that's separate and those increased this year. And then there's, in the budget, it looks like savings, but the shit shoot work has finished. So that is coming off the books. It's not quite there yet because the state is requiring us to do some testing. So that went down from 75 down to 5 so that we can finish the testing and then hopefully get them completely wrapped up. But overall, the operating costs are level. That service, it doesn't change. So remind people, two buildings we have to pay for. So that's about $709,000, which is the majority of those two buildings. And the public safety building is a 30-year loan with an annual cost of $377,000. And Whitney Hall is another 30-year loan with an annual cost of $321,000. The reason why those two don't sum up to $700,000 is because of other small ones. So cost reduction. So health, as I mentioned, the town changed health insurance providers and plans. And so the health insurance in 2024 was budgeted at 759 and in 2025 was 643, so that's $115,000 lower. The other thing is the town is pursuing to continue to pursue grants. They applied for almost $3 million in grants. Most of those were not awarded because there was one big grant in there for $2.7 million related to water system improvements. It's my understanding, and I can correct my grammar, that we essentially applied for too much money and were planning to take too much of the pot that the state had. So it's my understanding we're going to apply for a little bit less so that we have a chance of the state awarding this. And I believe the numbers like mine do.
Yeah, we were looking at 900, but I think we, I think we finally put in it somewhere around the 450, about half of that.
So we'll continue to work for grants. So the reason we picked up the 9 is mainly because we were asking for too much. And so like, like Jim and Ed have said before, when you do grants, it's important that you know what the availability of the money is and you have to time those right. And if you don't hit that target, you often don't get grants. So so if you summarize it all up, the 2025 general funds. So salaries increased 7.14, benefits decreased 4.97, operating cost increased 0.32, and debt decreased 0.02. That's a general fund operating increase of 1.6. Okay? Not 12. Right? I can't stress this out. 1.6, not 12. So if you look at past years, yes, we were on a track for going up. The big hump you see on the 2023 and 2024 are us approving the two looms. I believe that was 2022, right?
When we approved the buildings.
Yeah, so see, we approved the buildings in 2022. We saw two peaks, which was 2023, 2024. Because we spread the impact over two years and we came back down. Right? Again, the budget is going up 1.6. All right? Now, as we'll talk later, because we used $400,000 last year of savings to reduce the taxes, the taxes are going to be more than 1.6. Right? And assign fund balance. So you guys have seen this many years now. This is essentially the savings account. Right? So when you use the cash in the accounts too much, the savings account goes down. And that's what happened in the, you know, 2000, I need different glasses. I didn't wear my lifeless. So from 2013 to like 2015, over the course of three years, we kind of eroded our savings account to the point it was negative. This is why we can't keep taking out $400,000 a year to give the taxes. Because if you do that, this is just going to attack people. So if you look at the estimated surplus of last year, which I will discuss on the next slide in detail, we actually had a surplus of 321, which honestly, I was very surprised about. We'll hear more about that in a second. And then we used like over $300,000 of it. Right? And so we actually leveled out. And we actually have a small decrease. So if you look at town policy, the town policy is to be at least 8%. That's why the green line on the bottom is slowly going up. That is because the total dollar amount of the operating costs are going up. So 8% of that dollar amount means it goes up. So even if you keep the savings account level funded, you can eventually drop below that 8%. So we really should be slowly building our savings account. No different at home. I saw, I saw a Facebook video, but I want to quote social media. But like in 1950, it was less than a dollar for like a carton of milk. And now it's like, what is it, $3, $4? And they were saying that another 50-ish from now, it's going to be like $15, $20. Right? If you let the fund of your savings account, you're in trouble. You have to keep, your savings need to keep up with inflation essentially. You should be building up your savings account with inflation, otherwise the value of the money goes down. So speaking of, so sometime in 2024, our debt part of the budget saw a significant overrun because of an unanticipated grant payment. Realizing that people had to squeeze out another $178,000 out of the budget, different departments were tightening their locks. So certain things were being deferred, like training. And in the end, people ended up saving $180,000 in personnel and $300,000 in operating costs. And so that's why we still have a surplus even though we had an overrun in our debt. Which is great because we decided to use $400,000 in savings last year, 100 and something from closing accounts and the other $300,000 are over cashing. That's why you cash essentially as well. So if you look at the summary of the expenses, so that top line item is our general fund. And that's that 1.6%. Low that, you have the water and sewer funds. Right? They see small, they actually see a small decrease for water and a small decrease, an increase for sewer. You have capital, projects, and then TIF. But all those combined are our expenses. That's actually the number we're voting on, is that bottom number. So even the number we're voting on is not 1.6% bigger than last year. Because the general fund of 7 million and something is that 1.6 and then you add a whole bunch of other stuff to go for the water system and all the others. Even though these others are offset by other sources of revenue. So our total expenses, including debt, is actually increasing 0.4%. Given the fact that inflation is 3.5%, I think that's pretty amazing. And then I have the CIP numbers. There's two, but then we'll talk about those. So now revenue. Right? Remember? Taxes are all the expenses minus all the revenues. So in that, you see, you see the inter-operating transfers of $1.795 million. Well, that's essentially money coming in from water, sewers, TIF, and others. And so they actually cancel out. So then the general fund revenues, right? Those numbers help lower our taxes because the more revenue we bring in, the less taxes we need to cover the expenses. We actually think it's going to go down this year, even though normally it's slowly going up. And the main reason we're doing that is because we want to be a little bit cautious in the money we're going to get from the federal government and the state. So we actually think that those are both going to go down. Well, what happens when your expense is 1.6%, but your revenues are going down? You're going to have to get more taxes to cover the gap or find more revenue. So tax impact. So I'm not taking my last one, sorry. Yes, I can read my own memory. So if you look on this one, so we actually had, we actually had a 0.1% increase in appropriations from all sources. So that's the general fund, water fund, super fund, TIF, capital projects, and CIP. Right? So all the expenses, every single one you can think of, money flowing out, that is going up by, actually went down by negative 0.1%. So that's for all purposes the same. So then you subtract from that all the money you get from water and sewer and these other sources. Okay? So now you have all, all the revenues, all the expenses minus these inter-operating transfers were at 0.2 million. Subtract from that the revenues, the ones we're going to get from the state, federal government licenses and these, these were going to go down. So now we are at 6.27 million. Well, last year was 6 million. So you may think, well, the gap we're trying to cover only increased 4%. Well, not really, because last year, we took another 400 and some thousand and so the 6 million became 5.5. We're not doing this this year because we don't want our savings account to keep rolling. So last year for the taxes, we collected 5.5 million and now it's 6.2. And the main reason is we expect to get less in revenue and we're not using our savings because our total money going out went down by 0.1%. So that's where the 12.5% comes from. But that's taxes. That's not the budget. So if we want to pay less taxes, yes, you can decrease the budget, but you also can decrease your revenues. So
May I interrupt you really quickly? There's about less than 15 minutes left on the SB2 article if you've not voted. And it will close at 11:45.
So my bold prediction again on taxes. So I'm going to use the same formula like last year. So what I did last year was, for the school, I took the increase to where it was actually planned at the delivery session. It sounds like everyone passed, so the school impact is a 1.9% increase. Okay? The town is a 12.5% increase. Again, not the budget, but the taxes collected because of less revenues and us not using savings, 12.5%. I don't have any insight into the county or state education. Maybe next year, if somebody here actually has intel on that, I'll use those numbers. I should have thought of asking you, but it's just occurred to me. So, so essentially, for county and state education, I used the inflation rate. And so if you do all that, if you do the math, the impact is 5.5%. Okay? Last year, I had a big disclaimer saying, hey, there's a reevaluation coming. That number could become anything. Right? And for a bunch of people, it actually became negative. This year, there's no reevaluation coming. So I think 5.5% is a pretty safe number unless you're going to be in major construction or demolition of your properties. Okay, so billing pack 5.5. So like the 12.5 is not even your tax impact. Right? Because that's just the town portion. The whole billing is going to be 5.5% increase. All right? So to illustrate the impact of revaluation, please also don't compare tax rates. Right? Because if the tax rate were to, everybody's bill would have gone down like 30 some percent. There's not more there, actually. Because of tax rates of like, towns can actually select where they want their assessments to be. They can manipulate their assessed value. That's why the state actually does, somebody don't have any. Yes, thank you. That's why the state comes up with an equalization ratio. So if you want to compare taxes between different towns, go ahead and do that, but compare the equalized numbers, not the direct rates. And so again, I would not focus on rate. I would focus on Y 45%. So for the town though, the increase would go to 6.09. The impact of that is $80,000 because of increased appropriations. $165,000 because of reduced revenue. We increased our war service prep to by 2400. But then the biggest impact is use of fund balances from different sources, $452,000. So future is difficult to predict. But 88% of the increase is the result of reduced revenues and using money last year. And so 12% of the increase is really just the changes in the numbers. So the proposed general government operating fund, what we call the budget, is increasing by 1.6%. We expect revenue We expect revenues from the state and federal sources to decline, and therefore the impact on the town tax rate is twelve point five percent because last year we used existing money. The expected impact on the total tax rate is five and a half percent. Just again, the warrant article. Again, the warrant article is a sum of nine point four six million dollars, which is all expenses, including water and sewer because that's how town government is set up. That is not the general fund. And then I would like to thank all the members of the budget committee for their support as well as the town. Thanks.
All right, we're going to open this to the floor for comments and brief questions. Folks, can we?
First of all, is the man in the same situation, is the staff or having issues? Any, anyone to bring up?
Uh, well, go ahead, I'll tell the gentleman. You're at the right place.
Thank you. So I'm Dave with the extreme in the field, and the first thing I'd like to do is to applaud my opponent for reelection, Joe Woznowski. I apologize that that's a, that's a mispronunciation as well as my misphrasing, Melissa. She opposed me, but I really applaud her willingness to run qualifications and very strong election show. If she's here, please stand.
Dave, questions?
I welcome, I welcome. I would certainly be happy to consult with her. Now, please display, go back to slide twenty, I believe it is, Dimitri's, which shows the twenty-two-five estimated tax impact. And if available, can you turn page fifty-three of the twenty-two-four town report, which was handed out today? Dimitri and I are speaking about different line items on your slides and your presentations. Oh, I wanted the tax impact, please. I believe this is slide twenty. Our menu is changed, tax impact.
Want to, want to serve a card?
All right, I will, I will not keep you longer. As the sole descending member of the budget committee, I repeatedly consulted some background accounting expertise before taking this position. I, despite being asserted to be misinformation, I speak in opposition to further twenty-two point five percent increase in the estimated tax impact. I'm not speaking about your budget committee. Cumulatively more than fifty percent since twenty-twenty. When individuals, families, and businesses make a major purchase, the wise choice, as you've said, is to find ways to tighten our belts and reduce our expenses, not to clean savings reserves, taking larger forms, or asking friends and relatives to contribute. This meeting, as the town decision leaders, owes taxpayers the same due diligence. Despite mistaken assertions of misunderstanding and misinformation, I look to the bottom line cumulative taxes to come out of all of our pockets. Again, six point seven million, six point two million, take a half a million, twelve point five percent increase plus additional arguments. As well as municipal wire users and water sewer users will pay their share as we previously did. Such increases are not sustainable, particularly for long-term residents of fixed incomes, workforce families, and those facing large tax increases due to reevaluation. Precisely those we need to preserve our values, small-town, village, rural area. The budget committee deliberations this year were flawed in process and result. The short round presentations and proposals were accepted at face value with few questions, minimal discussion, and no consideration of possible reductions. Instead of the lean budget and CPI or consumer price index inflation estimates of two point five to three point five percent suggested initially by the select board, the estimated tax impact increase is twelve point five percent, again, six point one two million plus the special arguments. I do not concede the spreadsheet semantics over what we're talking about. Therefore, please vote, join me in voting no on budget article A. Thank you.
Steve, so a simple question. The Castella contract, they have no control over the living and nothing cost. How will a town in Enfield have to pay for their increased fuel, fuel also?
If there's an increase in fuel use, there is a fuel additive that can be added. We don't expect that right now. It will still be going with eleven in landfill. Though it's a hefty increase, it's still by far the cheapest landfill anywhere around, so.
Thank you.
Kristen Harrington. Jimmy, thanks for your presentation as usual. What is, I have a question. I want to know with the increase for, not the salaries, because that was total salaries, but the wage increase, like you presented, the COLO or whatever you're calling it for this budget.
The cost of living increase for this year was three point five percent, same with the inflationary rate, and then the rest of it was based on a person-to-person basis, based on the compensation study.
Okay. And I know the budget process, because this is what I've been thinking of, is relatively long, so I don't know how much you all are able to take into account all of the external factors, political factors going on right now, but was there any cause of lowering that or keeping that flat just based on minimums and money?
We made a decision a few years ago to base our cost of living on the July-July timeframe with the, with the cost of living index. So we, we went on that and then, you know, we made some decisions moving in, but the three point five was based on the decision we made to keep a static number moving forward that was, that was fair to the employees and the taxpayers.
So to clarify, that is how this term or what the COLA number is, but the budget committee did discuss whether or not that should be changed, so it's not like in perpetuity we agreed to give COLA raises every year.
Tim, my head field, going to keep myself under sixty seconds here. Having spent a significant amount of time on budget hearings at the State House over the last month, you should know the largest department in the state is cutting eleven percent across the board from the Department of Health and Human Services. There will be no automatic pay raises for state employees for the next two years in the budget cycle, zero point zero for the next two years. You can expect a significant drop off in state funding of any, is what we have been told on a regular basis. The rooms and meals tax calculation is being changed as we speak. I don't think it will affect us too much, but it will. The, the only folks getting any pay raises are the state employees. That's it. And it doesn't matter if you've worked there twenty years or twenty minutes. That is going, all departments are being looked at for cuts. We were told two months ago, four percent. Now it's double that or more for every state department. I don't see any effort like this in this budget, and that's why I'm voting against it.
My name is Betty Flitda. I just want to say I really appreciate all of the ability to see these graphs and charts. We're sitting in the back and we can't see them, we think that they are located in our books. So I would just really like the ability to be able to actually see what those charts said and what the graphs show. So if there's any way for, before this happens, that, just remember we have a audience here, if we could have those papers, that would be very, very helpful, because I really appreciate all the work that was done, but I don't get to really see it. Thank you.
Jean Patton, no, not here with the question yet. So I just want to say, and this is my personal opinion, I have my invisible shield on, because I'm sure there's a few that are thinking, has Jean like lost her mind or what? I am in support of this budget this year. I feel like a lot of the stuff that happened last year, we did to ourselves, probably be included, I thought we thought it was a great idea at the time. But I feel like all of the things that have happened around us and building projects going on, and those aren't always smooth either. Is the budget perfect? No. Am I happy about the total twelve? No. There are a couple of things in the budget that I wasn't happy about, that I voiced my opinion about, but they're not things to hold the budget hostage for. So I am urging you to vote yes on this article.
Steve Stans, Changerville, first off, I, I just want to question and then comment, but also want to say to the budget committee that, you know, they've done a tremendous job. It's a signless task to go through all these, you know, financial accounts, and, and they really work hard at it. I do have a question for Dimitri. You had a slide earlier that focused on debt service, and I was wondering if you could bring that back. And, and I think Jean was sort of hinting at the same idea, that past town meetings, we voted for projects that have a tax impact, and debt service plays a part in it. And we can't go back, regardless of how you felt, one way or the other, the votes were taken, we've gone down that road, we had to do the construction. And, and I guess my question for Dimitri, if, if we were excluding the debt service, wouldn't the actual operating budget this year have gone down a bit?
No, because the debt service didn't really change.
Okay. But if you compare to prior to our taking on the debt, in other words, our construction projects, and, and that's my whole point, is that the, the budget committee has done a tremendous job in terms of operating expenses, they're reducing our current expenditures going forward, but we've got this element in the room now, debt service, and it's not going to go away, it's just a reality. But I think, you know, in, in the balancing act that the budget committee has attempted to do here, I think they've come out with the best result, given the circumstances. So I would urge that you approve this budget, vote yes.
Wendy Piper, I live on Lock Haven Road, and I'm also the Rafterdon County Commissioner that represents Enfield. And I'm very sorry to say this, but I really think that we should rethink that COLA. We're facing the same issue, and we have faced the same issue over the last five years at the county. We've made some of the same decisions at the county regarding using surplus funds, and we managed to keep the county portion of the taxes to zero and below. That, of course, doesn't necessarily translate, as Dimitri said, into property taxes because it's equalized by the state, so it's out of our hands. But the reason why I stood up to talk is because, again, I'm sorry to say this, but I'm in, I'm in government too, and, and the public sector employment was really never intended, or I should say, it's very difficult, as Dimitri just said, we lost a lifeguard because McDonald pays more. Salaries on, salaries at, at the government or for government employees really were never intended to compete with the private, with private industry. We simply can't, if you think about it logically, we're dependent upon taxpayer funds, we're not, we don't work for profit. So how can we possibly keep pace with, with the market all the time? And so what we've done through our government, the town does it, the state does it, the federal government sure as heck does it, and the county does it, is that we offer very good benefits. We offer very good benefits. And we've had, and those include paid leave, you name it, every conceivable holiday that, that has been put in, has been put in, because there's a sense that we should take care of our employees. I think we should take care of our employees, but I think we owe primarily, primary responsibility to our constituents. So, and I guess the last thing I would say is, I know I have a reputation for, I guess I'll call it fiscal responsibility, others who call it fiscal conservatism, but we've had this issue at the county. At the county, there's been an average increase of five percent, five percent salary increase per year. So if somebody makes, if a department head makes a hundred thousand dollars a year, that means that that person gets five thousand dollar raise that year. How many of you who don't work in government get that? Seriously, how many don't get that? Sorry, I'm supposed to look at Lindsay, I'm down Lindsay. So I think that we need to, to realize this or think about this, and the, the hard-nosed part is, is that I've been the chair of the, the commission for a long time, and I've had to talk with the employees, and we've had to say, I'm sorry, we simply can't raise you this year. Your benefits aren't going away, your earned time's not going away, your vacation's not going away. Nothing's going away, but we can't give you a COLA. We simply can't give you a COLA. And I've seen very, very, very few county employees actually walk away from the benefits and the conditions that we have to offer.
Folks, I know you're getting a little restless, but if we could keep private commerce or side conversations to a minimum or take them out of the room so we're not disrupting other people's ability to hear the speaker, I would appreciate that. Okay?
Hi, Andrew Rager. I have a question. I may, I may have missed it in your presentation, but how much of the, the debt service or the budget is going to be taken from TIF? Because TIF, they're for a reason, and Whitney Hall is right in the middle of it. So according to this, the un-audited balance of the TIF district funds as of December thirty-first, if they're going to be one, is two point six five two million. And that's money that is, that's being held on to from tax revenue to be reinvested, reinvested to the district. Now, don't have exactly in there a plan for the, the TIF district itself, but that doesn't mean that we can't add it to it next year at town meeting.
Yes, and the bond payment would not, I mean, that would be a bad initiative, funds, trying to pay that down, it would be just like we were talking about, you'd be buying a tax rate down, that would be going right back up. You know, the TIF district money is meant to reinvest in the district, to improve economic development, to raise the tax base. And, you know, you sit on the TIF committee, we've done a lot of work looking at projects that well exceed the amount of money in the TIF district that, that could go into building infrastructure and things, that would raise the taxable amount of the TIF district, which, you know, in the whole scheme of things, would lower everybody else's piece of the pie, so. I mean, that's what it really should be used for, we should not be using TIF funds to offset the cost of these building projects.
Right, but Whitney Hall itself is a huge improvement to the area. So it, my argument would be that it is something that would, would help immensely, because having a functioning town hall, town building, is a huge endeavor, a huge investment, the, the reason I brought it up.
Tom Claus, Polly Dryden. I'm a numbers guy, and I'm going to say a few things that will hopefully help people make a decision on this. First of all, I have to commend the budget group, sharpening their pencils in only raising one point six percent, I think it was. For those that will, are implying to vote no against this, you have to realize it's going back to the old budget, is what will happen. So if that's in mind, keep that in mind, how much of the one point six increase in the budget affects the tax rate? Like, what is the percentage of tax rate increase?
Eighty-eight percent of the tax increase is due to reduction in revenues and not using savings, so the impact of the budget is less than a half percent.
Right, my, uh, what I'm trying to get at is, our taxes are going up twelve something percent. But of that, most of that is not related to the, the budget.
Correct.
And that's what I'm trying to get clarification, people can understand it. So I don't like my taxes going up twelve percent more than anybody else, and that down on the fifty percent, I'm the lake that's seeing their property taxes raise even more than that, so I'm not saying that I like it, because any of us do like it, but when you look at this budget... at this budget, you gotta look at it in itself, not so much in respect of the big tax base.
So the 12.5% increase in taxes is $700,000. The impact of all appropriations, of all the money flowing out combined, is less than 80. So 80,000, it's going to be less than 80,000 out of 700.
Well, that's the 10% of the increase in taxes would be due to budget increase.
Yeah, 12%. All the rest is due to reduction in revenue and the fact last year we used savings to make the taxes lower. So to really, to make the taxes not change, we'd have to adjust the budget by $700,000.
Good, thank you.
Susan Grant. I'm not good with numbers. What I want to know is if you vote no on this budget, what services are we going to lose? I count on police, analysts, I should count on the snowplow. So I think that they've done the best they can to save as much money as they can.
So I want to make sure everyone's clear, because this is a town meeting, so you all sit here until we agree on a number. I just, that's the joy of a town meeting, right? We do this till we get it right for the majority of people. So if you vote no, you have to come and you have to figure out what you want your new number to be, and then you vote again. That's the joy of a town meeting. This is not a speaking jam.
I'm the select board representative to the Budget Committee, and I've been enormously impressed with the quality of the work this committee has done. I know that there are things here that worry many of us. I think the thing that really worries me is what's happening politically. Stock market's going down, there are real concerns. The state of New Hampshire is obviously, and that's been mentioned, cutting. But here's what happens if we cut, we're talking about the COLA in particular, right, 3.5%. What happens when we cut raises out? Our workers will leave. We're in an area, the Upper Valley, there are jobs. Policemen are poached from us by other towns, BBW workers. And it costs money to hire people, to train people. I won't even ask the chief to say how much it costs to bring in a new policeman, it's enormous. And we need those services, but I would hope to drive a snowplow. There wouldn't be a mailbox left. So I know this is tough, I know this is unpleasant, and I'm really worried about the fiscal future, but I think we have a good, workable budget, and I think we should go with it. Thank you.
All right. Yep. Tracy Young.
It's Tracy Young. I'll take deference on the criticism that began this discussion of the Budget Committee. They were thoughtful, they were receptive to every suggestion, and they really put boots to the ground as far as carving this budget to the lowest possible rate and keep all of our services the same. So I'll take pretty good offense of that as an alternate to the budget as well. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the budget, as you see, the tax increase that you see, the 12.5 projection, represents only 34% of your tax bill. It only represents the town part, that's roughly 34% of your tax bill. When we say 12.5%, please don't equate it to the rest of your taxes.
Hello, I'm Sharon O'Pay in Enfield. I commend everyone who spoke today, you know, there's lots of good points, there's a lot of work that's gone into this. I respect all the committee members and all the employees of our town, police, fire, et cetera. There are a few things, though, that confuse me. It confuses me, it's nice when we see a screen as Dimitri so thoughtfully prepared for us, one of the things that confused me was it said "Enfield High Quality." I think that's a good aspiration. I watched as, you know, we've increased our police force, we all want police protection. I do question why we need the number of police, full-time police in our town for the number of people that we have, perhaps, that's why we, I know, people don't agree with me, it's okay, and that's probably why it's a very peaceful town. I'm not knocking the police, don't get me wrong. I questioned a couple of years ago, I was sitting, I go to a lot of committee meetings, and I was sitting in one of the meetings where they discussed use sports, and there's a long history of that that I won't go into, but the basic idea was, we had a part-time recreation director that may or may not have been on salary, forgive me for not minusing details right now, but the basic idea was we wanted to kind of manage it for the whole area, Canaan and all the other towns, and wouldn't that be good? And they would pay us a fee, and so that would really be cost-effective. Well, the rec director for that went from part-time to full-time, maybe that wasn't the only reason, but I've watched these things go up and up and up. And I just, one of the things that Dimitri, I'm almost done, thank you for your patience, one of the things that Dimitri said was, when there was some bill this year that had to be paid, and money had to come, you know, you had to find the money. Dimitri, I don't have the figures perhaps exactly right, whatever, down, but it was something like $180,000, I think, for personnel, maybe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, and $300,000 for operating costs. So I questioned, okay, you know, Kate, you told us, or maybe it was somebody, Lindsay perhaps, that we had to sit here and figure out, if this is turned down, where are we going to cut? It seems like when push comes to shove, there's room to cut in different places that we don't know about, sitting here today. You know, I leave that up to the representatives and to come back with another budget. You know, maybe we have the default budget. I don't know, I'm not that sophisticated to know how all of this works, but I just think that I am worried about our future, I am worried about what's going to happen to the state, I am worried about the budgets, the money that we might depend in this budget and receiving that we're not going to. And I don't want more taxes to cover the gap, as was quoted by somebody who was speaking just a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Just for clarification, we have added an officer for Enfield since 2003. We've been the same staff all the set set. Have you seen a bunch of new officers in that last 20-plus years? Yes, because up until recently, when we did the wage study, Enfield was a stepping stone. We paid way less. Twenty-three years ago, when I started on the government, our benefits were outstanding because of cost and unemployment individuals. Those have eroded, so that they aren't the great benefits that outweigh the public sector, the private sector that drove you, you know, to stay here. And so it is important that, you know, our Budget Committee and our select board, our commander, has done a great job over the last three to five years, and start to bring us into where we're not a stepping stone, where we're going to retain people, where we can continue to have longstanding service of people that work in this town, and the highway, the police department, you know, and the town offices. And just another point on top of that is that, that's 12% of 1.6% of the budget going up. So if we start attacking to 3.5%, what is that whole number of coming down the budget, regardless, 88% of it, we have to pay, because we're not going to get the money from the state, we're not going to get the, we're not going to get the money from meals and roof taxes and stuff like that. We start looking at it, and you start looking at it because we've looked at this budget, the option of the budget is going to be a reduction in services. You could take the 3.5% out for, wait this break, we're going to lose people, we're not going to be able to, it might take a little longer to get your road up if we're down officers, you might take one or two officers to respond there, not that we wouldn't try our hardest to get there, but when you start looking at five cents to your, you know, five cents to your thousand in the budget, is that the impact that you want? That's what we're for. Do you want to take that five cents out and save it, or free, you know, if you're willing to pay for that, for those level of services that you've become accustomed to?
Peter McVon, from Georgia. I don't know if you've been driving around this area, if you've noticed all the Florida plates. There's a heck of a lot of people from outside that would like to live here, and so if you're not happy with the way things are, you won't have any other solution than to have us, but I'm not sure where you would want to go after that. I also want to point out that my 79-year-old neighbor from across the street has basically grew up here, and he said that our Budget Committee is the best he's ever seen, so just wanted to lead you to that.
Megan O'Brien, I'd like to call the question. Great. All right, so we did have a petition for a paper ballot. I see the people that have signed this, so I'm going to make you stand up. So this will be a paper ballot vote, the red one, that says Article 8. Please, let's do this quickly, we lose our audio in an hour. So they have another place they have to go, it's our microphone, we say, we say. I'm going to announce results. And we have a whole bunch of stuff to still get for them. We're going to preserve it for them. So please, everyone, take your seats. I do have the results for Articles 7, if we remember way back when. This was to appropriate $100,000 watershed. So we had Articles 7. Total votes cast was 205. It did need a three-fifths vote to pass. It required a three-fifths positive vote to pass, which was 123. The yeas were 1 in 5. The nays were 20. Article 7 passes. Article 12. Article 12. SB 2. Total votes cast, 244. This one also required a three-fifths vote to pass, which would be 146. The yeas, 156, no, 88. This article passes. Yes.
How do we, do I make a motion to close the streets or reconsideration?
Jen, where are they? There's someone on this light board that if you would like to, if you want to do Articles 6, 7, can I?
Well, 6, 7, and 12. I would like to make a motion to close 6, 7.
Restrict.
To restring.
Reconsideration.
Reconsideration on Articles 6, 7, and 12.
Do you have a second?
Second. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to restrict reconsideration on Articles 7, 6, 7, and 12. All in favor, raise your blue card. Reconfit that it's closed. We cannot bring it back up if people leave. We cannot go behind their back and re-vote it. All opposed? All right. Articles 7, no, 6, 7, and 12 are closed for reconsideration. Moving on, Article 9. Thanks, Mom. My dog needs to go out. All right. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $579,368 to be placed in the capital improvement program capital reserve fund previously established. So I have a motion to move the articles for discussion by Susan Brown, which is somewhat seconded. Everybody? Great, Eric Russell seconded. And I'm going to invite Dan Cady to make a CIP.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Dan Cady. I am the chairman of CIP. We, this is the 14th year that CIP's been in existence. We, when we started this, there was three dollars in the reserve. We have turned it over very well. We were talking about debt service. And I have, I've got a sheet here that's on the board. We're going to retire five loans between 1923, 2023, and 2025, which will lower the debt service we're paying by $148,000 a year. I hear the fourth diamond loan after the budget committed because we are not going to be looking to have any more loans this year. This will be the fourth year in a row that we are, we have a balance large enough that we can do it with cash, which will, which is going to save us, on average, we're going to go from $268,000 a year to $130,000 a year at the end of 2025. So we'd like to go forward with it. So the first project we're going to do this year will be the used park parking lot repaving. If you've been down there, it really needs to be repaved. And we will be able to use TIP funds for that because it is in TIP plan. This is what, please, what the DVW projects are going to be. I want you to take special note of the Shaker Boulevard Bridge. The state is going to pay for that. Our outlay is going to be $48,000 for that project. The way it's set up is the, the town pays 20% of the design and engineering piece. So we'll be paying 20% out of the $240,000. The rest will be paid by the state. It has been approved. Another one of the projects to look at is the motor replacement. That motor replacement, we're going to be putting in for the Volkswagen grand again. We did it with the truck last year. That is not state funded. That is a class action suit that Volkswagen had to pay the state. It is then given back to municipalities for what are called the dirty diesel. In order to be able to get the grand, the, the truck must be, the truck or loader must be at least 25 years old. And it has to be the old diesel truck. The offset to that is if you get the grand, the old truck you're replacing, you have to kill it, legally kill it. You have to either take all the fluids out of it, run it until it burns itself out, or run a spike through it so that nobody can take and use it again. Because that, that was the reason that they put this, the class action suit happened, is they want to get all of those dirty diesel trucks off the road. It's mainly if municipalities are getting it because the state of New Hampshire doesn't have 30-year-old dump trucks. They seem to replace them a lot quicker than that. Next, the next one is the public safety. The $393,000 fire tanker is a tanker that we could replace. The one that's in Ed Field Center, the Ed Field Center one was a reconverted milk truck. Yeah, and the problem with that is, first of all, we only had two people on the fire department that could drive it. We have a new one that's going to be an automatic transmission. Anyone who is able to, is, you know, been, been licensed to drive the vehicle will be able to drive that vehicle. And also, we put an additional pump on it so that you'll be able to use it. It will not be considered an engine because it's going to be a small pump. But it, it could be an attack vehicle if it showed up and it was a dumpster fire or something like that. Cruiser vehicle is an ongoing. This will be the final of the new cruisers, as they say. So that, that's why it's $78,000 because you've got to reconfigure these. It's the Ford Explorer will be getting rid of one of the regular, which means you have to do the extra of putting new equipment on it because it doesn't, it would not fit. But if you look forward, it's only $60,000 for the following ones because you would take the old equipment off the Ford Explorers as you retire. You could put them on it. Fire Department Cascade System. Just heard today, probably bring it to the select board, that we may move that in 2025 because we're able to get a better deal. We're going to be able to get it for a lower cost. That also means we'll be able to put it into the fires, new fire station rather than taking the old one, having the old fire station, putting it into the new fire station and having to take it out and put a new system in. The Cascade System is what they use to fill the air tanks with. A bit strange perhaps to the Waka Mile. The Waka Mile is going to be the, the trail that goes from the Shaker, Chicago Beach to Shaker, Shaker Village. We, I suspect we're only going to do it if we get the grant. I believe it's an 80% grant to do that. The ballot counting, ballot counting machines, it's the, the state's going to get all the ballot counting machines. We are going to get 5, 50% will be paid by the state. 50% is paid by the town. Summing the finances, you can, as you can see, we'll be using $519,000 this year in cash. We have, we are getting debt service payments that we have to pay. So we're funding financing all those so that the cost for all funding sources is 1.975. So we got cash, that was $519,000. $209,000 in debt service. As you can see, in 2026, the debt service is going to drop to $167,000, $27,000, $143,000. Right now, we are projecting, we'll have no problem in 2025 with paying everything in cash. What that also does for us is $579,000, it's in the warrant article, goes a lot further because of the debt service, which, if you look at it from that standpoint, it also will take care of the inflation. The cost of vehicles since COVID have increased a lot, okay? Not only have they increased, it used to be if we ordered a truck in March, you'd have it for the end of the year. A lot of the trucks now are taking 15 to 18 months to show up. So that's, that's what's happening is we are getting another year's worth of cash because it's staying in the fund. This is the principal payments. So what's going to happen is the 1.177 on the bottom is going to drop down to $975,000 because we'll be retiring two more next year. As you can see, as it goes down, we'll be retiring more. As you see a zero there, it means we've retired that level. As I said, this is the fourth year in a row we're paying for everything in cash. We're able to build up that balance so that we're not paying loans anymore. That's our balance as of the end of 2024, 1.365. 14 years, it's gone from three dollars to 1.361. Yes, that's the end of the presentation. Thank you. And just one other thing, I'd like to thank the members of the committee and also thank Bob Music and Lee Carrigan because it was their idea.
All right, folks, is there anyone that had would like to make comments on Article 9? Seeing nobody running towards the microphone? Oh, seeing somebody running towards the microphone?
Thomas Lockhead, Lockhead, Rhode. One question about the capital reserve fund. The money currently in it, is it invested? Is there return on the investment that sits there?
It is invested. It's invested with the trustees and the trust fund. Because all capital reserves have to, are handled by the trustees of the trust fund. It is invested in, we call them very conservative investments in order to not lose principal.
Okay, that's what I was looking at.
Yes.
Stock market, is it?
No, none of it can be, by law, none of it can be in the stock market anymore. And this, the trustees, the trust fund, it is managed by the legal bank of New Hampshire.
Thank you. Call a question?
All right. This is a, we're just going to do a hand, all we need to do is a hand vote, simple majority. So all in favor of Article 9, please raise your blue card. Okay? All opposed? So can I say? All opposed? The yeas have it, Article 9 passes. Article 10. Yes. At that age, that's something we had in hot flashes. Have you seen me back there? Okay, Article 10, see if the town will vote to discontinue the following capital reserve funds. Said funds and accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the municipality's general fund. See them up there, replay? Do I have a motion to move Article 10 for discussion?
I move Article 10 for discussion.
Great. And I'm going to invite Eric Russell to present. He's going to present both Articles 10 and 11, so.
All right. So the gist here is that these are two funds that have served a purpose and are no longer needed. The library building capital reserve fund was for the library trustees to raise money for the renovation library that is in process of being completed. So we don't need that reserve fund anymore. And the sidewalk construction capital reserve fund was used for the sidewalk project last summer. And future sidewalk improvements are going to be planned through the CIP program that we're just going on, so we don't need that fund either. It is, the point of note that any funds remaining go into the general fund. And in the case of the library building capital reserve fund, there is about $71,000 in that fund. And so that brings us to Article 11. So those will go into the general fund, sorry, the, the undesignated fund. If we pass this one, then Article 11, because those funds were raised specifically for the library, Article 11 would use, would expand those funds on the building project to reduce the overall debt service.
All right. So are there any questions or comments on Article 10? Right now, Article 10 to discontinue. We sell my capital reserve funds.
10 minutes, how much money's in the sidewalk fund?
None.
Okay. Thank you.
You want to give the answer? None. Yeah, in a solid 100%.
We need time to vote.
All right. All right. Any other comments for Article 10? Then seeing none, we will do, we'll do, we'll hope by show hands or blue cards. So all in favor of Article 10, please raise your blue card. Yes? All opposed? Article 10 passes.
I move to reconsider, reconsider all previous articles. I can give you the, you can give me the numbers and I will repeat them.
So right now, it's nine and 10.
Nine and 10.
Okay.
What other order is that? Restrict?
Restrict, reconsideration, yep. So I have a motion to restrict reconsideration for Articles 9 and 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. And all in favor, raise your. Great, and all in favor, raise your card. Okay, all opposed? Great. Articles 9 and 10, reconsideration has been restricted. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 71,525 for library building construction and improvement expenses. This sum to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation.
Move to accept Article 11 for discussion.
Second. Thank you. And I believe Eric just already addressed this, but if there's any comments or questions, you're mentioned before.
Yeah, Kylie, it's actually not the 71, $71,000. In looking at the library fund in here, there's $475,000 in the building fund. I'm wondering what's going to happen with that $475,000.
Can we look into that? Yeah, there, some of those are available, some are not. We'll pull up and look at that code on.
Okay, because I thought that was from donations that they got.
The donations are library.
Right.
The town has no.
Right, well, I guess the question would be to the library trustees then.
Any other comments or questions? So, I'm going to put the answer that's left here. Come to the microphone. He doesn't have rules.
There are still expenses to be paid, I mean, Shirley Green, sorry. There are still expenses and that are being paid out of the fund from the donations. When those expenses are paid, there will be, they will vote as a one-time payment to the, against the principal of the home to shorten the length of loan, thereby shorten the amount the taxpayers only pay. And the length, it will be a significant amount.
And Shirley is speaking on behalf as a library trustee?
Yes.
I'll clarify that a little bit too. There's a large amount, much more than that, close to a million dollars of library expenses total that have been paid. You know, those bills come through the town, we pay them, we're working with the library trustees right now. They're finalizing some upgrades and things that they were doing inside the library, the beautiful shelving. You guys will see those types of things. And then we'll work with the trustees to pull that money into the town to make the principal expense, which total, the total cost will come down because they're paying part of library expenses that were part of the renovation.
We plan to go, that money will then go into the town's undesigned fund, party fund. Whatever is left after we use or need to furnish the rest of the library will go directly to the.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so seeing nobody rushing towards the microphone, we'll put this to a hand vote. Just need a simple majority. And so all in favor of Article 11, please raise your blue cards. Okay? All opposed? All opposed? Okay, the yeas have it, Article 11 passes. I have the results from Article 8, the budget, town budget article. So Article 8, total votes cast was 186. We need a simple majority for it to pass. The yeas, 145, the nays, 41, that article passes.
I make a motion to restrict reconsideration on Articles 8 and 10.
8 and 11.
I'm sorry, 8, 11. Yes.
Yeah, keep up here. So 8 and 11, direct second. Oh, sorry, Eric Russell. All in favor of restricting reconsideration for Articles 8 and Article 11, raise your blue cards. Okay, thank you, all opposed? Excellent. If we're clear, if we're doing this instead of yelling out yay, 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 because yelling is not, we're not encouraged. All right, Article 13, shall the town modify the provisions of RSA 72:39-A for elderly exemption from property tax in the town infield based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows. For a person 65 years of age up to 75 years, $82,340. For a person 75 years of age up to 80 years, $123,510. For a person 80 years of age or older, $164,680. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $34,235, or if married, a combined net income of less than $47,402, and own net assets not in excess of $92. Oh. That was a 19. $92,170 excluding the value of the person's residence. Do I have a motion to move Article 13 for discussion?
Uh, move to accept Article 13 for discussion, second.
I'm going to invite my person Kate Stewart to present Articles 13, 14, 15, and 16, so pay attention.
All right, I'm going to try to distill these articles down, these four articles down because they are similar. So I want to start by explaining that Articles 13, which is the elderly exemption, 14, which is the disabled exemption, and 15, which is the blind exemption, can be found in this beautiful white book on page 32 and on. And the reason I say that is it's sometimes nice to not read a big paragraph and find a little grid with the current verses that propose. So I think that will be a helpful item as I talk to you guys. So if you don't have the book, there's more upfront, sorry, that where you sign in for quote. So I'm going to go back to the very beginning. In 2024, we look at different exemptions all the time. So if you come to one of our meetings, you'll see us occasionally voting on exemptions. And on May 2nd, we got a memo from our assessing administrator, Julie Huntley, about a social security increase that caused somebody to just very narrowly miss the exemption. And that was then was over 90 years of age and that potential loss of exemption was, you know, a concern. And this is something, as we look at record inflation, we look at how the values went up in this area during COVID, right? Because suddenly we're the cool place to live. But while we're in our homes, someone else is buying at much higher prices than we already were selling. So the real question is, if you have these articles, do they help if you don't make sure that they're actually going to offset some of the tax impact? So during the January 21st Select Ward meeting, we asked the town manager's office to review the amounts we had on record. So Articles 13, 14, and 15 are exemptions we already have in place. So we asked the question, these would be reality and the current tax evaluation, do these make sense? Do they actually help our residents, right? Because it's one thing to have something that's aspirational, it's another thing to have it actually work. I think we have a lot of laws out in New Hampshire in general, books can't pick seaweed at night, but don't work, right? Don't make any sense. So does this make sense for our community, is it working? And so Ed, and if you need to see it, he has a fabulous table he came back with. And so we discussed the values of each article and we looked at them to compare to other towns around us, the inflation rate and COLA to say, you know, does this make sense? And with that comparison, we came up with numbers that we felt made sense to present to town meeting today. Article 16, the deaf and severely hearing impaired article, that one is new before this year. So you'll be being asked to adopt and give it a number that's printed in your book. And that is because while we were looking at these other exemptions, the question came up, is there a reason we don't have this one? That's up to you as the voting body to decide today, is this an exemption you'd like to give? I'm going to give you a really basic, not factionally number example, it's going to be easy, right? So say you have a $400,000 home and for easy math, we gave an exemption because you qualified through one of these, what the tables explain. We gave you $100,000, right? You would be taxed on $300,000, so that last $100,000 of value of the exempt. It's not that we're giving you a tax credit of the amount, it's that we're exempting from your property value a certain amount. You also, there's asset requirements. And I'm not going to read through all of them unless someone really wants me to reread everything. But that is kind of the super high level explanation. And I think if there's questions, I'll try to answer some, but I'm pretty sure I'm going to kick them over to Ed too.
Yeah, I just want to add to that a little bit so you guys know and understand how we came up with these numbers. Like she said, we did look at some comparisons of other towns, but really the exemption, as she stated, is based on property values. So we adjusted what we were exempting by the average increase of the reevaluation. So we just used that statistical number, house prices went up this much, that the exemption should go by the same amount. And then on the asset limit side, we went back to the last time we adjusted these numbers at town meeting and we just added the cost of living inflation from that time to this time to those numbers. So to, to the Select Ward of myself, that it made, it made sense to keep those numbers the same and it's something that we plan on looking at every five years during the revaluation process.
All right, we'll open it up to the floor for questions or comments.
Tim Dickens, could you explain how a person applies to that process? And then how do you determine their net income by?
Thank you.
I don't know all the detail, detail parts of that, you'd have to go to our assessing department. But every year before April or around about April, you can apply through the assessing department. They have a whole process to go through and they get a bunch of information from you and they, they kind of weed through that and they have a way to figure out exactly minus your house, your assets or what you have and how it actually pans out to see if you qualify for the exemption or not.
Susan Gibson, I'm just wondering why disabled and the deaf residency is different than the elderly?
Those are all based specifically on how the state law is written and what we are allowed to give. The elderly one is different, but the disabled, the minimum that we can give is 15,000 and that's what we had been giving.
I'm sorry, no, my question is why the residency? So you have your elderly at 40 consecutive years, disabled at five, and then deaf at five years. The residency, that's what I was.
So those are strictly out of state law.
Okay, thank you.
Yates Martin. I've been legally blind since I was 18. I've lived in this town since 50 years. This has helped me more, I can, I can make so much money. It helps us with our property and I thank the town.
Thomas Lockhead, Lockhead, Rhode. Is this taxable here now or is it, I guess that's the only way that you could determine, but with Roth IRAs out there, all their poor old kids go Roth and then they come in under the tax rule.
I figured it stopped me on the first time. And I think you did, I don't know.
There's an asset test? So if you look at our reporting now, in loan assets, not in excess of $92,170.
Yeah, the statute doesn't break it down more than that. And I don't know if the assessors questionnaire goes into that granular. But I'm not aware that it exempts retirement assets from the calculation. I might know, they're exempted in other areas of law, like credit protection. But I believe this does include retirement funds. So, you know, IRAs, Roths are the main asset number. Thank you, but I'm so going to congratulate you on stopping the chump now.
Okay, here's assessing administrator, no filters. Okay? So statutes say, income from all sources. So I take a look at everything that you have, whether it's a deferred plan, you have deferred benefit or non-benefit or not. So there's a lot to it. You have IRA, CDs, your bank accounts, stocks and bonds, all of it has to be provided, as well as all of your income. You know, some of it's assets, some of it's income, social security, retirement plans, all of it has to be provided. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Go forward. Hi, Debbie Delpho. So understanding why these increases, that means if you're potentially limiting people who might already have a benefit? It is quite a job. I'm misunderstanding.
No, it was actually open it up so a few more people may qualify. We've had people over the last few years, because their incomes increased, that it cut them out. By increasing these, it allows people to fall under that threshold. We're getting help in the past and continue to be able to get help.
Steve Stancic, just a question on, since the state requires the blind and the deaf to be in a specific category by itself, is there also a specific definition of the disabled category? In other words, who, since we're leaving out blind and the deaf, who's left in the disabled category?
It's based on the social security definition of disabled. I did look that up yesterday, knowing you'd asked about it.
Anyone else? All right, so we're going to vote on Article 13 just by showing hands or blue cards. All in favor of Article 13, please raise your cards. All right, hands down, all opposed? The yeas have it, Article 13 passes. Article 14, very similar, Kate, get into her presentation. Article 14 reads, shall the town modify the provisions of RSA 72:37-B, exemption for the disabled from property tax based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be $89,500. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $34,235, or if married, a combined net income of not more than $47,402, and own net assets not in excess of $92,170 excluding the value of the person's residence. Do I have a move to accept Article 14 for discussion?
I move to accept Article 14 for discussion.
Second.
Second, okay. We've already had a presentation, so are there any questions or comments from the body? Once, all right, all in favor of Article 14, please raise your blue cards. Great. All opposed? Article 14 passes. Yeah. Article 15, shall the town modify the provisions of RSA 72:37, exemption for the blind to allow an captain who is legally blind, as determined by the blind services program, to be exempt each year on the assessed value for property tax purpose of his or her residential real estate to the value of $26,850. of his or her residential real estate to the value of $26,850, as determined by the legislative body. Do I have a motion to accept Article 15 for discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions from the body?
Tim Jennings, question is, is there a mechanism by which these dollar values can be indexed to COL or something like that? Or do we have to just kind of remember these are there and every three, four years, bring them back up and increase the amount? Thank you.
Yeah, there's no index that we can do. They do need to be voted on every time we change them.
All right, seeing nobody else approaching the microphone, we hand over to Article 15, all in favor. Please raise your blue card. Thank you, all opposed? Article 15 passes. And Article 16, shall the town adopt the provisions of RSA 72:38-B, exemption for the deaf or severely hearing impaired persons for property tax based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be $26,850. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $34,235, or if married, a combined net income of not more than $47,402, and own net assets not in excess of $92,170, excluding the value of the person's residence. Do I have a motion to remove Article 16 for discussion?
I move to accept Article 16 for discussion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Great. We already had a presentation. Great. Yes.
I just wanted to make clarification that the elderly exemption, the blind exemption, that we just voted on, what was the other one? Disabled exemption, those have all been voted and adopted by town meeting. In this study, looking at this, there's a, a deaf and hearing impaired exemption out there that has never been adopted by town. What we're doing today could be a new adoption of a deaf and hearing impaired exemption.
Did everybody hear that? Thanks for, thanks for being on the phone. All right, any questions or comments from the, the body? All right, seeing nobody approaching the microphone, let's do, we're going to do a show of hands. All in favor of Article 16, please raise your blue cards. Let me put those down. All opposed? Please raise your blue cards. Article 16 passes. I want to take this moment to remind everybody that there is a corned beef and cabbage dinner this evening. Takeout only. It's a fast out of five to six, it goes quick. Enfield Community Building, $15 per takeout meal. We're not quite done. There is, there is just a little bit more for some of you to stick around. Article 7, so, hey, corned beef and cabbage. Article 17, to save the town, we vote to allow the select board to establish a new default community power rate to include a, I don't know how to even say that word. .002 per cent kilowatt hour to the granite basic rate. The new default rate would be, would call the Enfield local rate, and the proceeds of such adder would be dispersed to the town to be used for energy efficiency projects and initiatives around town. Enfield residents participating in community power may opt out of the Enfield local rate and may opt into the granite basic rate. This article is contingent upon the passage of Article 18. If Article 18 does not pass, this article will be null and void. Do I have a, a, a motion to accept Article 17 for discussion?
I move to accept Article 17 for discussion.
I'll second that.
Great, and I'm going to invite Kim Clark to present Articles 17 and 18.
Thank you, and thank you all for staying. And we're interested in our next steps in the Enfield, Enfield's Community Power Plan. And I'm Kim Clark. And with Joelle Courtney, we're the co-chairs of the Enfield Community Power Committee. Committee, so we're also, I'm also on, a member of the Enfield Energy Committee and, and on the board of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, otherwise known as CPCNH. First, a quick reminder of what community power is. If you look at your electric bill, you'll see that it's broken down into two major parts. This is electricity supply and the delivery of the, of the electricity. There are other charges on your bill, but these two elements are usually the biggest charges on your bill. Energy supply represents the actual generation of the electrons, includes facilities like a fossil fuel power plant or a solar array, a hydropower plant or a nuclear plant. The delivery charges are associated with those physical lines that are bringing the electricity to your house. In New Hampshire, as well as a lot of other states, the public utilities are not allowed to own the energy supply. And they are compensated only for delivering that energy to your house. They have to keep the lines up. When the trees knock them down, they have to go fix them. And they also do the billing. So all the bills you get are coming from that delivery company. For us here in Enfield, we are either on New Hampshire Electric Co-op, Liberty Utilities, or EverSource. And that's the company that's going to keep the lines up and do the billing. But we in New Hampshire have an option as to what electricity supply we want to use. In this picture here, we see on the left the source. Community Power, in New Hampshire, gives Enfield residents greater control over what is the source of our electricity. And by aggregating the loads, which is what the usage of all, all those, in our homes and all that electricity, by aggregating loads over many towns and many communities and cities in New Hampshire, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, CPCNH, can get low rates and can offer more default energy choices for our customers. So they can offer cleaner energy if people want to opt into that. Delivery in the middle, the public utilities, as I said, Liberty, EverSource, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, continue to service the lines to our houses and to provide the billing. They have to pass through the electricity supply charges. And there's some other charges that they pass through. They just pass those through to the bills, on your bill. And then on the far right, community benefits. Along with taking control of our energy supply, community power provides other benefits such as lower rates, more choices. And today, I'm introducing the new community that CPCNH is able to offer to see if Enfield residents want to take advantage of it. And it's called the local rate option. And just a quick reminder about community power and what's done for Enfield. Enfield started taking community power in April of 2023. And up till the end of 2024, we just got all the numbers in from last year, Enfield residents have saved over $500,000 on our electric bills. And across all of the 50 communities that CPCNH serves, there's been $22 million of savings in the first two years of operations. This is an example, every six months, the public utilities and community power sets new rates. And this is an example of one of those rate periods. This was winter of last year. At the bottom of this, you can see the rate that Liberty and EverSource have over 10 cents a kilowatt hour. And just above that was the rate that community power set for the granite basic rate at 8.6 cents per kilowatt hour. And then three grades above that are rates that people can choose to get 33%, 50% or 100% clean energy. So those are the choices that have been available. And today CPCNH is offering the choice to set your own local rate. So go to the next slide. So for instance, you can see where that little arrow is. The local rate can't be lower than the granite basic rate, but it can be a tenth, two tenths, three tenths of a cent higher. Any, any additional amount above granite basic is, that money is collected and it's stored in Enfield's reserve funds that will be distributed to Enfield as requested. The two articles we're discussing now are to decide whether we at Enfield, at Enfield, want to set up a local rate. And if so, we, and then also to set up the Energy Capital Reserve Fund, which is where those extra funds that will be received. In this example, we see that the Enfield local rate is set 3/10 of a cent higher than the granite basic rate. And in that case, 3/10 of a cent would build Enfield's funds to about $42,000 a year. For the average residential user, that's under $2 a month. I did this example based on 3/10 of a cent. But with discussions back and forth with the select board and feedback that we've gotten, we've decided for this article, we're suggesting 2/10 of a cent. 2/10 of a cent would build the funds at about $28,000 a year. It's important to understand that if the town agrees to allow an Enfield local rate, that becomes Enfield's default rate. Everybody who's on community power would start getting charged the new rate at the start of the next rate period. Again, rate periods are about six months long. But it's also important to note that at any time, any individual can opt out of the Enfield local rate and go back to the granite default rate, or they can even go back to the utility default rate. There's, there's options in this program. That's one of the most important things about it. So some of the questions we've gotten as we've done some public presentations and have people come to the energy committee and talk to us about this. Why are we being asked to set a default rate as an opt in instead of an opt out? In other words, if we're going to set a local rate and then ask everybody in the town to pay the Enfield local rate, is it better to ask people instead to opt into that rate rather than opting everyone in and saying that you can opt out? And basically, there, with all, it's, it's likely with the studies that people have done, if we ask people to opt in, we'll get a couple percentage of people participating. So it's not a program that could help us with creating energy efficiency programs for the town. Actually, you can, you can go to the next slide. I didn't say what, what we might use money for. So if we do this program, let's talk a little bit about what are some of the projects that can be used. For instance, we have a solar array on the DPW building. And that solar array, we don't own it, but we have an opportunity to buy it in a, in another year or two. And so these kinds of funds could be used for that. Another option, opportunity is for more energy efficiency equipment in our municipal buildings. Or one that I really like is the energy audits and helping people to weatherize their own homes. So, so the question about opting in versus opting out. So if we ask people to opt in and provide, we actually are going to, because we ask on, Liberty asks on their electric bills, do you want to add a dollar to the fund other people who can't afford the program? And, and so the, the numbers are in that those programs, there's just, there's no money. If you ask people to opt in, then you'll only get a small percentage of participation. Asking the town, that's what we're doing right here. If we all want to opt into a program that we can use to collect some funds to create energy efficiency and to help the town reform with efficiency and saving money is, is what we're asking for in this program. And again, it's really important that we can opt out and we can help people opt out who feel that, that that's a little bit too much for them. What if the local rate ends up being higher than the Liberty or the EverSource rate? Every six months, the select board has to actually make a positive decision to institute that, that Enfield local rate. If they don't, if our select board doesn't participate, then Enfield will be back on the granite basic rate that we are today. And I say that because it's important to look at, is this new Enfield local rate still going to save the town money? And we can decide if it's not, then we won't do it this, this rate period. Right now, the rates of community power are a little higher than the utilities. This is the first time that's happened. At any time, individuals can opt to a different rate if they want to go back to Liberty or Unitil, or not Unitil, because they don't have Unitil, but EverSource. But every six months, the town gets to make that decision. And every day, an individual can make their own decision. So if you decide today not to, not to participate in community power, you can go to the website and, and make a choice and change it.
Maybe they'll stop there. Questions? Something to, questions or comments? I'm going to flip.
Jean Patton. So my question would be one of the things, when you, you know, we passed this, this fund, things such as buying out the solar array on the DPW building. If you buy out the solar array on the DPW building, then is that now another thing the town has to maintain? And how is that being handled at the moment? Like who's paying for maintenance of that and that sort of thing?
Okay, that's, is that your only question or?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So right now, the, the solar array on the DPW is owned by a private investor and, and town, the town is paying for the solar electricity to them. If we own that array, we get all of that electricity free. And it's very much easier for the small amount of babies that would be necessary to, to keep it going. So getting that electricity free for the rest of the life of that building, 30, 40 years, is, is probably, is probably worth it. But the town can never create a bond, we're not, can never create a bond. It would be a harder sell to get the town to agree to a bond to buy out the 100, I forget what the number's going to be, $60,000 array. But if we can do it through another program, then it would, it would be easier to, would be, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Ed Ripley from Hollydine. This is a fantastic program. Thank you for all the work you've done and setting it up and saved a lot of us a lot of money. Unfortunately for my wife and I, we are, we have this Tesla battery system where we have time abuse rates. And we have not been able to be included in this because of the time use rates. Is that going to change? I hope so. But irregardless of the repercussions of that, we saw the rates drop. This program is keeping the utilities and EverSource honest on their terms.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, their rates have dropped because of this pressure.
Yeah, the rates are quite, quite a bit lower than they were last year. And that's thanks to you folks. But as far as the time use, I really like to see that coming because I feel like it's sort of helping. And I don't know if anyone else has this Tesla.
Yes, even if they don't have the time of use, the other program that a lot of people have is a solar array and they're on the net metering program and they have not been able to participate either. So those are two really important ones that community power is working in the legislature and with the PUC to force the utilities to let third party suppliers participate in these programs. So I can't tell you when that's going to happen. I can just tell you there has been a lot of pressure every year for that. And the legislator, legislature and the PUC are not inclined in this time. And that's all I can say. But we're still pushing and finding other ways. So for instance, we do, community power does have to buy RECs, renewable energy credits. So people who have solar arrays may be selling their RECs to somebody else. They could be selling them to community power, which just helps keep the money on within Enfield and within this area. So that's a new program that's just being launched. So that even though the solar people can't participate directly, they can sell the RECs, they can choose where to sell the RECs. Thank you. Thank you.
David Kellman. If you're already purchasing one of the rates that include higher percentage of renewables, can this to, 2,000th of a kilowatt hour? Now, where's we haven't been at? How does that work?
Not yet. Okay, so if you've chosen, let's say, 100% renewable energy and you're paying that higher rate with, with community power, and you would prefer to, you actually have to make a choice to continue in that program or to be part of. a choice to continue in that program or to be part of the Enfield local rate, because that local rate will be lower. And if you, so right now, you can't choose both. But everybody's asking for that, so it will just be a matter of time before Community Power can offer people who want 100% and want to contribute to the local rate. So sorry about that, not today.
I don't buy this program at all, but the default switch is the sticking point for me, where you're turning, although it's very negligible, that it increases without someone who may be unaware or couldn't be here or didn't look at the warrant articles into the lockout rate. That's my sticking point. If someone else wanted to turn that final amendment or whatnot and decide, it would be important, but important at all, the default rate is my sticking point.
And I think that's really important because that is the sticking point. It is the sticking point is that there's not really a program if it isn't defaulted in. And yet, I think we have to rely on the Community Power Committee, the Select Board, et cetera, to say, this is still saving you money or not. And if it's not, we don't do it. So each six months, there's that question once again. Is that, is it still lower than the default rate? Would it still be saving you money? And that's, and more importantly than that, individually, we can all choose something. An individual can choose something different. And I think it's important to help, help those who this does affect negatively, that who feel strongly that they really can't participate, let's help them lock out. That's an easier way. Like, we know some of those people, we can work with them. So those are the two options that we have, that this program allows. It's not that I link a lot of their relationship.
And thank you for everything that you've done with this rate.
Thank you.
Just one question. You're setting up capital reserve. Who's the agent to expend? Doesn't show in the warrant article.
So like, the way we described it is like, with the TIP district, we have ideas of the projects, but they are, we're one to actually spend the money. We would come here and say, we want this program for that.
Can we read this like what you need to expect?
No.
I have three questions related to the first debate. Are you other gentleman?
Can you step a little closer?
How would the consumer be communicated with to know that they need to opt out because they're going to be defaulted in? And then what's the timeframe when it would be implemented? It's voted in today. And then how is, if the select board is going to be making a decision every six months, how would the consumer in Enfield be communicating what that new rate would be? You have to be aware of the meaning that is decided, and it'll run three minutes, or how would we handle this consumer?
Great question. And I'm going to take the first one and the third one, which are both about how do we communicate to all of the residents and how do we communicate where they can make their choices, their individual choices? Right now, the way that the Power, Community Power group has been communicating and the Enfield Energy Committee is through listserv and the town's newsletter. Certainly would like to know if there's a better way. As everybody probably knows, postage is pretty darn expensive, and all that would do is raise the amount that we have to add to the rates, to add to the postage, just mailing it to everyone's house. But if there's other ways, absolutely open to suggestion, neighborhood, you know, things online or emails or something. And certainly there's website. So the town website has a link to the Energy Committee and the Community Power. And so at that website, you can get information on this, but also there's the link to opted-in, opt-out to things. And then there's myself and Joelle, and we try to post, again, I don't know if you're on the listserv, we try to post often so people can send emails and questions, and we can send them directly through links and stuff. But other feedback about where you get your news, your Enfield news is important. Oh, the second question, tiebreaker. So if it's voted at this town meeting, then the next rate period, the rate periods are decided at the end of June and the end of December. So the next rate period will be the end of June, so it will be taken up at one of the select board meetings, probably earlier mid-June, that timeframe. And at that point, it will have, our select board will have the information on all of the rates that are being chosen by utilities and Granite Basic, and we can make that decision to do an Enfield local rate.
I would read about that timeframe, that the consumer would look on the town website to see what the new rate would be.
Yes.
It would change.
Yes, yes, exactly. Actually, it's more like, so that rate goes into effect August 1st. So July would be the communications timeframe. And December, January are the two big communications timeframes. Thank you.
Steve Stanczyk. I just have concern, even though the dollar amount seems very small, I mean, basically, this is a tax on the community, you know, much like property tax, and it's going into, you know, basically a sludge fund. And I get that the projects are lawful, you know, since I buy out the solar array on the DPW building, but, you know, why couldn't the CIP fund do the same thing? And furthermore, as a particular project of that sort, solar arrays over time degrade, they require higher maintenance, sometimes you can fail. So I'm not quite sure what we want to be on. But, you know, maybe some of these other projects make sense, but, you know, this seems like a hidden tax, and I'm just a little weary. Unless you can sway me further, is why you want to opt to increase our city rates?
Yep. Okay, so I appreciate the tax question. The reason I believe it's not a tax, as in maybe officially definition of a tax, but even the feeling of a tax is because both the town can opt out and the individual can opt out, and we can opt out of our property taxes. Those are just, those are what we have to pay. So that's why, again, I don't know what a formal definition of a tax is, but that's why I think it is way better than a tax. It's not the sound of a tax.
Hi, my name is Bill. I'm concerned about two things. One, I don't like anything done without informed consent, and I think that the idea of doing it through whatever the town website or listserv, I'm not on listserv. I know a lot of elderly people are computer phobic and not willing to do that. So one of the things I would want to see is something go out, maybe with something else that goes out. I don't know what else comes out by mail to all residents, maybe with your tax bill. There should be something that says, I want to opt in, I want to opt out, so that you're not paying extra for sending things by mail, but it's coming with something. That's what I prefer to see. And the other concern that I have is just, just, I'm only 66, but I know how many things go into my mailbox that I say, dang, is this spam? Is this another USPS or, or what's the, yeah, TOGUs things that are coming to my house? And is this yet another thing that I won't know, or somebody else won't know that this is spam or not spam? So how would we know what's coming to our computers if you're going to do it via, you know, email or whatever, that this was real? And I would want to have that validated to people, what the address is, if it's a URL or whatever it is. To make sure that you're not saying, yeah, this is something that's bogus. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good suggestions.
Tim James. So question is, if you're, say, elderly, single person living in a home, not very much power usage, you're 0.02 per kilowatt hour, you're not paying very much, whereas someone that's got a 10,000 square foot home, lights all up, lights and cars all the time.
Pays a lot more, yes.
Pays a lot more. So is it perfect for rest?
Rest and shacks, yes, absolutely.
Charles Clark, Enfield, New Hampshire, Jacob Hill Road. I was heading with the solar array installed. I happen to know what the original bid was. I don't know what the second bid was, one we accepted. But it would be beneficial to the town as soon as we can buy that, because my last check, we were actually paying more to buy solar from the person who owns the solar panel in Enfield than we could buy from Liberty. The other thing, I would suggest that we contact Liberty or the building company to see if they can slip a note in with your bill to say you have the option. You know, everybody, everybody was an opt-in, but that was because you were actually going to buy what you were using. Now that we're buying what we're using with an extra dollar or two added. So my suggestion is contact Liberty. I've dealt with Liberty for the last, as long as we've had solar in. They are very agreeable if you contact the right person. The problem is contacting that right person. The town of Enfield is billed, billed on their electric bill, but the number of streetlights we have, when I first started with the program, we were being billed for streetlights that didn't exist, and we weren't charging for ones that were there. When you see a streetlight on, I don't mind, because we don't pay 24/7. We pay for the time, the operating time of the lights. But when the lights are burning 24/7, Liberty is actually, it's costing them. But to get them to fix a light is like pulling, actually to push a rope uphill. And so I don't really mind, but I have found a contact after many years of searching that he apologized to me with streetlights that I've repaired.
Something I need to be calling, Cherry.
Okay, yeah. So my suggestion.
See if we can work with them.
Yeah, buy the solar as soon as we can, because they're paying more to have solar. It looks nice, it's green power, but my toaster doesn't work any better than green or red.
Seeing nobody else in line at the microphones, we're going to go ahead and vote on Article 17. We'll do it a hand vote. All in favor of Article 17? Please raise your cards, your blue cards. Okay? Goes down. All opposed? Please raise your blue cards. I'm going to say yeas have it. Okay, Article 17 passes. Article 18? To see if the town will vote to establish a Community Power Energy Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of funding energy efficiency projects and initiatives around town to be funded primarily by proceeds from Community Power Enfield Local Rate collected in the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and Heald Fund escrow account and disbarred to the town. This article is contingent upon the passage of Article 17. If Article 17 does not, Article 17 passed. So we can now, do I have a motion to accept Article 18 for discussion?
Move to accept Article 18 for discussion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Does there any further conversation or questions about Article 18? As Kim just gave a great presentation. Seeing none? I vote to buy again and show up. Cards. All in favor of Article 18? Please raise your blue cards. All right, thank you. All opposed? Okay, yeas have it. Article 18 passes. Before we leave, do I have a motion to re-considering consideration for?
Make a motion for reconsidering.
Yep.
Restricting reconsideration files 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
So a second? Second. A second. All in favor, folks. One second. And I, all in favor, restricting reconsideration for Articles 13 through 18. Raise your blue cards. Great. All opposed? Articles 18, 13 through 18. Article 19, to hear reports of victims, others, communities, or officers, if anyone had anything else they need to add to this meeting. Our last town meeting. We will see you all at the deliberative session. It'll be early February, not sure when, early February. Thank you all for your participation today. Do I have a motion to? Yes. Thank you.